We will, uh, call this meeting to order. Thank you for being patient with us. I remembered my cookie, but I forgot my laptop and my notebook. Dr. Means, would you help us with a roll call?
Yes, Dr. Maddox.
Dr. Knott.
Here.
Dr. Gant.
She is.
And she's here.
On her way, yes.
Mr. Worthy.
Oh, here.
Mr. Bybee.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Here.
Dr. Barry.
Here.
Mr. Dickerson.
Here.
Thank you. So the first item today is we need to amend or adopt this agenda we have, and just for clarification purposes, we have a little bit of voting. This is typically our work session week. And we have a lot of work session type work to do. We'll discuss many items, but there is, towards the end of our agenda, there is, we need to take some action on personnel recommendations. We have an executive session just prior to that to have a conversation we need to have around personnel. So that is okay. So that's, that's why this is set up as a called meeting rather than this typical work session. So if there's any questions around that or around the agenda we have, we'd be happy to entertain those. Otherwise, a motion to approve the agenda.
I will so move, but then I'd like to discuss it after we take a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Maddox. Discussion, yes.
Yes. Yeah, there's an addition that I would like to make. I, I, I thought it was going to be made at this meeting, and I just talked to Dr. Means, and he thought it was more for the next meeting. But this is the proposals for the GSBA.
Yes.
And I, you know, because, uh, because we need to, to, to vote on these as a board, at the bare minimum, I, I would like to have them discussed. Dr. Means even suggested that maybe we could take the advantage of this being a call meeting at some point, and a special meeting, and actually vote on them. But, um, I would certainly like to enter these into an agenda. And this is the proposal for the GSBA legislative agenda that will be presented in May, hopefully by, hopefully presented in May.
Great, thank you. To Brett, perhaps, and then we can discuss how we want to handle this. I agree with you. I think we definitely need to discuss them tonight. And they were.
Emailed.
Emailed.
But I don't know if they went to everyone, but not only.
They did.
Did you go to everybody? I ran across there. I received that they don't got it assessed. Dr. Means and Worthy. Okay. But I've got hard copies too. I'm gonna go ahead and pass them around while you're looking.
Perhaps we can, we can add that as number two under J, other agenda items.
That would be great.
For discussion.
Thank you.
So then, Craig, would you like to make a motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah, I, I move that, that we, uh, under, uh, agenda letter J, that we, uh, have a discussion on the proposals for the GSBA legislative agenda that GSBA would use for next legislative season.
Thank you. Is there a second to Dr. Disamendment?
I'll say.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns around the amendment that's being made in motion?
Just one clarification, one correction. It says proposals for GS, he is in.
Thank you, thank you.
If we could change that to GSBA, then we can.
I'm just making up an organization as well.
You know you haven't been looking for it, right? I'm just like, I missed something.
Great, thank you. All in favor of the amendment that has been proposed? Any opposed? Okay, so that, uh, that amendment to the motion carries. So we still have a motion on the floor to adopt the as, as. All in favor? Great, thank you. So we received a number of information items in, in, on board docs. We received, uh, early head start, head start policy council meeting minister reports. Any questions or comments around, uh, around that report? We also received a SPOS report from April 2019. Any questions around this SPOS report? Great.
I have just, just, just one question, and this is for Dr. Means. I know what, next week we'll have an executive session dealing with, with the property committee. That, that's gonna cover all the aspects of, of, of our, of our needs in terms of, you know, central office location.
I think we need to add that, that whole more comprehensive.
Right, and that's what you're planning for next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But more importantly, if I may just use this as an opportunity, board president and vice president have, they've been working on developing a new board member orientation agenda that they would deliver. And one of the concepts that the board leadership have talked about is how do we, how do we create a committee that's more consistent on, in dealing with facility issues? I, I think, as I've listened to the board, board members in the past and present have felt that they, they needed to be part of the SPOS or the, the citizen oversight committee to really get a good handle on what was happening with our facilities overall. And that should never be the case. And, and so, um, I, I think this, your board, your governance board need to have a deeper conversation, but there are, there's models in school districts where there's more of a, a facilities committee, uh, where there's a monthly, just, there's just a monthly report out in terms of not only construction projects, but also what, what are some of the maintenance projects that are happening? So in other words, a real quick example, the softball field issue wouldn't creep up on the, the board if there was a facilities committee. So I, I think I'll, I'll defer to leadership on that one, but I know that our, our new chief, chief operating officer, Mr. Fisher, would be open to that more comprehensive approach to the work. So we don't have, I think, board members in the past appropriately have felt that they haven't been fully in the loop, not only with construction issues, but then how does that trickle down to just day-to-day maintenance issues as well? So I, I just, I wanted to share that with the board, that we, I think that's an ongoing conversation. It's another committee. But, but I think there's a way that, uh, I, I think you should discuss it. Because again, I think it's, uh, it would allow more voice and more information flow. Thank you. And sort of a clear front end back end kind of.
Right.
Conversations. Next up on our agenda is Athens Community Career Academy report. We didn't have a report attached here. We just are coming from a fantastic meeting with the Career Academy Board, which, uh, with cookies and juices and all sorts of fantastic things. So I wanted to express on behalf of the board our appreciation for, for that meeting and for all the work that the Career Academy put into an informative meeting for us to, to have to, uh, keep that conversation going.
That would be, that would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Judge Baron, who's the chair of the ACCA board, who's in attendance this evening. Thank you, Judge Baron.
And I want to express my sincere gratitude for the mapping of CTAE and our curriculum path for middle through Career Academy. That has been a long awaited phenomenon, and you just continue to amaze me. So thank you.
That was feedback from the board. I think if you remember from your, I think it was the October work session, we, we all acknowledged that was a gap in our work. And so Dr. Ramirez deserves a lot of credit. Lawrence Harris deserves a lot of credit. People buckle down after that meeting. There's still some more refinement to do, but I think it also shows that there's some opportunity for us to grow our C, our, our career technical and agricultural education pathways. And so it's a side. Yes, ma'am. And then moving on to number four under section C. This is the parent advisory board report, and it looks like there was no report attached from March.
There was a scheduling conflict. Dr. Richard Milner was scheduled to speak with the parent advisory board, but in his work with the College of Education with the University of Georgia, he actually had a speaking engagement on that campus at the same, same evening. Dr. Milner will be with the parent advisory board in May. I can't remember the date.
He says March 13th.
May 13th, thank you. So he'll be here on May 13th with, with our group, with our parent advisory board. There is another meeting with the parent advisory board on Monday, and so I'll be working with the parent advisory board at that time.
Fantastic, thank you. If there are no questions, we'll move on to section D, the minutes of our previous meetings. We received the minutes from a work session February 28th, 2019. Any questions or comments to, to those minutes? Hearing none. We also received minutes from a regular meeting, March 7th, 2019. Any questions, comments to those? Yes.
I just caught a typo right above concern agenda. Listening has, uh, an extra 10 in it, T E M. So Dr. Means spoke of the listening sessions.
Thank you for that. So we can perhaps get a revised copy of those minutes. A photo would be fantastic. We'll vote on those. Thank you, and approve those, uh, at our voting meeting next week. Moving on to financial reports, we received a number of financial reports from February 2019. And I anticipate we'll get a full report during our, our meeting next week. But any questions in the meantime about the financials? We, we also received, uh, an audit, you know, and the, the feedback from our audit. Wouldn't, wouldn't we anticipate those? I know we asked them to come back and, and give report. Can you remind the board when, when that will be?
Where, they said that the more likely it would be in either June or August, because typically their, their July is difficult. So either June or August.
Okay.
Uh, we do have hard copies, and I think you also received an electronic copy of that audit, but we're pleased to say that there, there were no findings. It, it was extraordinarily positive. Mr. Hamel and his team continue to do very good work, and it's acknowledged through the auditing process by the state. And, and I, I think I would be remiss if I didn't say that our, our cash flow and fund balance position continues to be very healthy as, as the month of February has now been closed in terms of our financial audit and analysis.
So the $600,000 is still there, right?
It's not quite $600,000 that will be going into fund balance. Ms. Davis, how about we are trending even positive? And what, what Ms. Davis has, and will continue to remind me and the rest of our administrative team, is that if we're trending in the positive at the end of the year, school districts have a decision to make. Do you place that fund balance into your larger fund balance pool and let it grow? Or are you able to distribute those funds prior to the close of fiscal year, which is June 30th? Ms. Davis has made it very clear that, uh, spreading those funds to some of our, our employees, especially our classified employees who work really hard and, and are not compensated at the same level as some of their colleagues in other neighboring school districts, that would be a, a nice gesture. And, and so we're continuing to.
And I'll try not to be persistent about that.
No, I, that's okay, if you are.
Good.
She's not gonna try too hard. Yes, Mr. Worthy.
I want to add something that Dr. Means said a few minutes ago. I've been around a long time. Mr. Ham, how many years you been here?
Seven.
I don't think we've had any findings on an audit report since he been here. When I was principal of Cedar Jones High School, I would say to the state auditor, she, he or she would come, I want to get this down to zero. And what they said to do, impossible. So he has done the impossible.
All right.
That's very very.
And for new board members, this, this concept of fund balance took me a while to kind of wrap my head around, but fund balance ends up, just like Dr. Means says, uh, ends up being the, that's the savings account. That's what we have in the bank for any day. That's what we have if the market takes a big turn and, and funds that we expected to come don't come, or if there are cutbacks on PPE or for lots of different reasons, you need to have that, that big cushion in the bank. And, um, and as Mr. Hamel has, has told us many times, 15 to 18% is, is a good, healthy fund balance, which, which is where we're at. And so that's, um, in our KPIs, a key performance indicator. We're constantly keeping track of, of where that fund balance is, because that helps us make decisions about whether, at the end of the year, we take some money and, and invest it and spend it, or we put it towards that, that fund balance. So that's kind of, that's that conversation, hopeless.
Thank you for that. In addition to what I just said, since Mr. Hamel been here, going into the closing out this fiscal year, several other fiscal years prior to Mr. Hamel being here, we had borrowed money to make the payroll during the summer that had happened since then.
Fantastic, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ham.
Okay, moving on to section F, this is our policy. We have, uh, policies, regulations, exhibits to be posted for public review for four weeks. And under that, we have policy BBSBC. That's right. So the policy to go out is community engagement policy, and we've spent a long time on that. That goes back before several years before. And so if you want to look at that, we've done good work as a policy to riddle that down to where it says what it needs to say. It doesn't say more, which can become complicated. And so, uh, it, it's coming out of policy, I think, with, with good vibes. So that's what we, that's what we look for.
Yeah.
Would you like to put up the other one? Real quick on, on BBSBC, any questions, comments from, especially folks who haven't been in, in policy committee? And that have reviewed the policy. So this is, this would go out for public comment. This isn't something we're going to adopt next week, so we're gonna vote to send this out to then come back. So any, any questions or comments before this goes up for a vote to go up?
No, a lot of good work. I like the patience with which we approached this. I don't think it'll be something that we'll turn around in six months and say, gee, we forgot something. Very well vetted. Thank you, Bill.
Fantastic. Then, under the next section, policies to adopt, we're saying these are policies that have been out. Have you received some, uh, have you received any public comment from those, Dr. Maddox?
We have not.
Thank you. John, any context on this one?
Yeah, sure. Professional personnel resignation, this has to do with, um, basically the process by which we have resignations and, and who approves that and how that's handled. And that's gone back and forth a little bit. And if you have not been part of those discussions, I encourage you to look at that, and we'll see if we have any comments on that.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board on, on this policy? All right. Moving on then to section G, this is, uh, again, brand new section that I have voiced it upon us and for which I will set my timer. Because I don't want to spend any more than 10 minutes on this, but again, this is, I think, what we need is, is the time to check in, the time to, to do some learning together, and, um, and I think we can all kind of grow from this, especially as, as we have many new people on the board, and, and we'll have more people on the board soon. So what I wanted to talk about is advanced ed. Start this timer. So advanced ed, for me personally, as still a relative new board member, I heard it's thrown around in lots of different ways, and, and, and it wasn't until, I really dug in and had some conversations with, with them that I kind of fully understood what it is about. And so, uh, I passed around to you two documents. This is Advanced Ed Performance Standards and Advanced Ed Policies. You should have both those in front of you. Advanced Ed is the, do you have both of those? It's, yeah. One of these and one of these. This is Advanced Ed Policies. So Advanced Ed is the accreditation body that accredit, that, that gives us our accreditation, right? So, um, and sometimes in the past, somebody you would hear referred to as SACS. It's my understanding that SACS is a previous iteration of Advanced Ed. Advanced Ed is now sort of a parent company that owns several entities, including SACS. So, uh, they are the, the body that comes in, investigates what we're doing as a school district, and says, we are okay with this. We, we support what's happening here. And conversely, when school districts are messing up, they are the body to which people can complain and say, this school district is messing up in, in these ways. And the, the, the important thing to remember is that, uh, anyone can complain to Advanced Ed and allege that we are messing up. It can come from a board member, it can come from a, a member of the public, it can come from a superintendent, it can come from a, a person in staff, it can come from a teacher, it can come from, uh, a well-versed high school student, I suppose, right? Somebody, anywhere, this can come from anywhere, right? And, uh, what they can, when we are accredited by Advanced Ed, we are committing, we are saying that we are living by these two documents. We're saying we're living by their, the policies of Advanced Ed and the, the performance standards. And so it's in these documents to which somebody complaining about what we're doing, we have to look and allege that we are doing something wrong from one of these documents. And so I, I think it's important that you have these, that we all have these, we understand exactly the rules that we're playing by. And so this complaint would come to Advanced Ed, this is the Advanced Ed website, so you can get a, a visual for who they are. This guy Greg Arndsdorf is, is a director here in, in Georgia. And so a person would make this complaint, they would say in writing, they would officially make an allegation, and then Advanced Ed would, um, would give CCSD 30 days to respond to this allegation. They would get to say, this is what's been alleged, this is the violation that's been alleged. What's your response, CCSD? And then we have some time to respond. That response can be adequate or inadequate based on Advanced Ed's determination. And if it is inadequate, then they will appoint a special review team to come in and to review the allegation and review kind of what's happening on, on the ground here. They may monitor what's happening on the ground. They may, um, if it is significantly serious, he, he mentioned if there is a trail of missteps or a preponderance of the evidence on the ground here, then they may, um, start to take actions against our accreditation as, as a body. And so they can make recommendations for no change to the accreditation, accreditation under review, accreditation under conditions, or drop the accreditation of the, of the CCSD school district if it is, if it is serious enough. I think the reality is before it gets to that level, in other school districts, the, the governor has stepped in and has relieved the school district, uh, the school board, rather, of their, um, jobs as school board members, and really shaken up, uh, the, the school district. So that's sort of the, uh, the whole menu of, of possibilities with, with Advanced Ed. There are a couple of performance standards I'd like to point out. If we look at two, on page three, performance standards 1.4 and 1.5. Those first five are really around the system and around the governing bodies. And so 1.4 says, and this is, this is where I believe school district, school boards would, uh, would, would have the possibility of getting ourselves in trouble. So the government, in 1.4 says, the governing authority establishes, establishes and ensures adherence to policies that are designed to support systems effectiveness. And 1.5 is the governing authority adheres to a code of ethics and functions within defined roles and responsibilities. And so this is where, this is a reference to our own policies, right? And so if we are violating our own policies, we are also violating this performance standard. And that's, that's where a school district can, can get itself into trouble by, by, by doing that. There's also, if you go to, um, the policies, the policy packet, a lot of the, the Advanced Ed policies don't have anything to do with us. They have to do with how they go in and, and, and perform their accreditation process. But section six is, is kind of the, the process that I'm describing. So section six, for some nighttime reading, is their procedures regarding complaints by and about accredited or certified institutions or systems. And so this goes through exactly, um, the whole process for how they would, um, look at a school district, the process that they would go through, the timing for responses and all that sort of stuff. I just want to make sure that none of this stuff is a mystery to any of us, because it's, um, it can be unless we really lay it bare. There's, um, and, and specifically section 6.05, the investigation of complaints gets really into, into the minutia of, of what that looks like. Any questions or comments around, um, Advanced Ed? I mean, this is, this is, this is sort of the umbrella. This is sort of beyond what we're doing here at the district level. This is the, what we've committed to as a school district. And our policies are the bumper lanes that keep us here. And then these Advanced Ed policies and performance standards are sort of a little bit wider set of bumpers that keep us, keep us heading in the right direction. That's right.
Why don't I make it through? I really appreciate you sharing this with my board. Well, I started to say this board, not this board, but Board of Education, Clark County School District, cited by, at that time, there was SACS in 2008, now they changed to Advanced Ed. Cited for some wrongdoing. And I'm going to cut through the chase by saying this. How many of y'all ever seen sausage being made? If you have, you won't eat it, okay? It's not fun, folks. We had to go through some special training, all of us, even though I was not guilty, but I had to go through it. But like I said, it can be a nasty, nasty process. Warning, reprimanding, and the lethal accreditation. Some people, you really don't know what that, what it means. It means that those students at the high school that are working toward a high school problem, it's not even good. College is more accepting, okay? Then you all, you see a sales sign, people moving out of the community. But anyway, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
So I thought, okay, thank you. This is really good to share. So we might want to talk about it, but it's kind of ambiguous. And I've talked to Greg as well. But one of the things, is this in preparation for us getting ready to prepare ourselves to become a board of distinction? So we just know the ground rules. I'm really trying to do this up right.
Part of it.
I want to see that. We want to see us go after something.
Board of distinction is the GSBA recognition that we can, that we've talked about putting ourselves into. Yes.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, when is the next accreditation for CCSD?
Just finished that. It's past January.
And it's every five years?
Every five years.
Okay.
So, yes.
I just had a question. Actually, it's for Mr. Worthy. I seem to remember in the handout that you gave to us for training, was there something in there about a communication with SACS that was more recent than for Advanced Ed, that was more recent in a way? That's what I remember.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it is more recent. And then, of course, I think what Jared with the grammar just added to the packet. If you looked at that last section of the orientation booklet that I put together, it's more comprehensive.
Wasn't there a letter or something?
Yeah, there was a letter from Greg.
Arndsdorf.
Yeah. What's his name? On? Arndsdorf.
Arndsdorf, yeah. Yeah, so you had communicated.
Absolutely, yeah.
And this, so this, and again, this is, if we, if we, if we get in deep and have a long drawn out engagement with Advanced Ed, I think there's also, like you mentioned, the ripple, the confidence in the public and the confidence in our ability to be a government body, the confidence in the school system really starts to, it gets messy real quick. And so I think, I think what we've, what we try to do is self-correct as best we can. And sometimes we do a better job of that than others. But I just wanted to make sure that it is unambiguous sort of what this body is and does and how they work. That's my report. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, sir. I will not try to tie myself.
Okay.
I can be as disciplined. I just want to thank the board for serving on a public school board. This week, we're celebrating I Love Public Education Week here in Clark County School District. You have a gift at your place where we weren't sure what to get you. So there's a hat. So we hope that you enjoy the hat. This wood wire has been working really hard to promote public education. We call, I believe we're providing, I don't, Mary, what will the treats go to students?
Treats, most students today.
So, and how many, what were the treats, Mary just said?
They were ice cream, fish pots, and hot spoons.
For all of our elementary students.
I think elementary and middle and high.
Oh, so everyone received it. They deserve it. So we just, we wanted to have everyone recognize that this is a public school district. And sometimes we hear and we all talk about what, hearing the media, what's wrong with public education. We just, we wanted to promote the opportunity with our kids and families to say, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you. So, Mary, thank you. Mary's worked really hard to make I Love Public Education Week. And we hope to make it even bigger next year.
And we'll be, thank you.
Thank you, yes. I think Mr. Davis referenced it earlier, but I just want to remind the board, we have a property committee meeting scheduled for next week to discuss a lot of different issues as it pertains to our future facilities use, be it our district office and what's the future, where we should have our district office, to the disposition of what's brought in that property. I should be able to give you an update a little bit more in regards to the school district's proposal to the unified government regarding the old Gaines site. And so the, I think it's citing opportunities there with facilities. And also our pursuit of trying to create more seats for early childhood education. I've said publicly that my only goal is to create more seats. Where those seats are created, I think is open for discussion. And that's why I'm looking forward to the conversation next week with the board. Do you mind? Thank you. Questions, Joe? One thing I want to do, you've charged me with being metric driven and improving the results for all kids in our school district. And I think that's important for us to do. And we'll continue to look at ways where we can improve. But I want to share with you that I've had a chance to go out to faculty meetings over the last few weeks to talk with teachers directly. And one thing I really focus on doing when I put faculties is to talk about their points applied. And because we are people who are working hard and they're, they're, they're trying their very best with our kids. And so I just want to share with you, you've heard earlier this year, we talked about a concept called unit post assessments. Those are assessments that our teachers give at the end of a unit to measure if they're growing or not. And I just want to point out, the English department at Clark Central have shown a lot of growth. When you look at the first unit post assessment and you take a look at their distinguished and proficient students from unit, unit post assessment one to unit post assessment two in ninth grade literature. And you see the same type of growth in 11th grade literature. I also want to point your attention to our advanced placement participation. Clark Central has ordered a total of 705 AP exams for this spring's testing cycle. And we have a total of 441 young people taking advanced placement courses this year. The total number of exams are up by 211, which is really something to celebrate. What we, what we found last year was that there were a lot of students taking advanced placement courses, but they were not sitting for the exam. And so our teachers really worked hard with our students to say, no, we believe in you, you can do this. And we want to work with you to ensure that you feel successful and confident in taking the exam. An increase of 211 is really impressive. But what's also impressive is teachers really dig in and demonstrating growth for one unit post assessment in that. Dr. Swaye Huff has really focused in on creating a new culture at Clark Central. So in looking at the data again, when you compare their total events of disciplinary issues, it's down in terms of the number of total events and the number of students involved in those events. In terms of our attendance, they're focusing to get kids to school at Clark Central and they're delivering a very positive message. And you'll see that fights are down as well significantly in terms of the number of students and the number of fights. Dr. Huff and I were most impressed with the teacher retention data that we have so far. We have a total of nine teachers deciding to leave Clark Central at the end of the year. But when you look at the nine, five are relocating out of the area and one's retiring. So two thirds of the nine are just other factors. They're not leaving because they were dissatisfied or they had other factors of interest in terms of leaving Clark Central. So I just wanted to take a moment to share with you, and this is happening across all of our schools, but this month I wanted to just point out to you that great things are happening over at Clark Central. And then I want to transition to our.
The teacher data around what, where they're going, is that from just his inquiry or?
That's his knowledge and people talking with him and sharing with him what their plans are for the next year. This past week was the end of the legislative session in the state of Georgia. There were some positives and there were some negatives. So let's start with the glass being half full. We're very pleased that Clark Central graduate Brian Kemp has implemented some of his campaign promise of giving teachers increases. And so there's a total of $3,000 inserted in the QBE funding formula for teachers and providing them an increase. The initial campaign promise was $5,000. They just weren't able to make that work with the budget and we'll see what happens in future budgets. There was also a $30,000 commitment or investment for each school for security upgrades. Now, those security upgrades can't be contributed toward personnel. But for hardware, hardware, we can invest funds. And as this board knows, we're continuing to look at the current state of our security system. That $30,000 will go a long way in helping us upgrade the work that we need to do with our, our security system.
Dr. Mayes?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct? And I think I read this and I think I heard it on, I guess, on TV, that $30,000 per school would be sent directly to the school?
I am not, I'm not sure if that's the way that the money will flow, if it's directly to the school or if it ultimately goes through Mr. Hammond.
But anyway, you're the superintendent, you check on it.
We'll, we'll check it out.
According to what I'm saying, it won't come to you, it'll go to the school. But anyway.
And ultimately, and ultimately, that work around what schools need will ultimately flow to our new chief operations officer, Mr. Fisher. So what will happen is that Mr. Fisher, Mr. Fisher will work with building principals to say, so what do you need? Do you need higher in IP cameras? Do you need more cameras placed in schools? Candidly, one thing that is overlooked from a security hardware standpoint is just locks where you could, you can lock the door from inside versus having to use your key and lock it from the outside. Little things like that is something that Mr. Fisher and his team will work on. So in a way, I think if the legislature, and I don't have any information on that or not, Mr. Worthy, but if the spirit of that statement was that schools know best where they want to invest their funds around security, I would say that's accurate. But there were some things that we should be concerned about with this legislative session. The first was a very, I believe, an aggressive attempt to expand the footprint around vouchers in this state. I want to be very clear, there's already a footprint around vouchers right now. There's, there's public money going to families in the name of private schools. And I am not anti-private schools, although it is I Love Public Education School, Schools Week, Public Schools Week. But for every dollar that is taken from the budget and placed into a voucher for families to then take it and put into a private school, you're taking a dollar away from a kid who goes to Gaines Elementary School. You're taking, you're taking money away from a kid who attends Coyle Middle School. It's, so I appreciate the legislature for a second year not imposing their austerity cuts on the budget. But there were many years where austerity cuts were imposed and we haven't caught up yet. And so for a two-year run, that's good that they haven't imposed austerity cuts. But there are years where the cost of living increases were still shoulder and placed in the back of school districts to make it happen. This attempt to expand vouchers was serious. I think it was due to a lot of people being very aware and ready to act immediately, caused people to, to at least, those who were in favor of vouchers to slow down and to consider the opposition. I would just encourage our community that we're going to have to be even more vigilant when the next legislative cycle comes around in January of 2020. Candidly, I was very disappointed that some of our legislators who represents this school district were some of the main leaders on a state level in promoting the expansion of vouchers. That's concerning. And so I think we have time, so constituents can call their legislators who represents this school district to tell them, we do love our public schools and our teachers are working hard and our kids are having an amazing experience. And when you try to expand vouchers, you're taking money away from, from kids in Clark County. There was also no action around early childhood education. And so if I could just, yeah, please, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, on that regard, maybe, maybe we can plan, from the government relations committee side, really start now and saying, reaching out, what do you want to know about our schools? To make sure you have a full understanding of what it is we do in all the different areas and start to schedule these things out right now and get all these people in to see what it is that we do. Because I think there's a, I think you're right, there's a gap, there's a misunderstanding about how we operate.
There's a significant gap. And I think at some point, some of the conversation around some of our local legislators were, well, isn't this a good thing for you? If you, if there were vouchers, then those kids won't come to your schools anymore and that means you don't have to educate them. That's, there's nothing good about vouchers. I haven't seen anything good about vouchers. And I think it's, it's really vital that citizens in Georgia try to avoid the mistake that the citizens in Wisconsin are now living with, which is you cripple public schools in the name of promoting private schools. That's what vouchers do. So yes, I think we can continue that work. Yes, ma'am.
And can I just mention the Federation Neighborhoods Program? How certain kids are going to be at a meeting Monday, coming Monday, at CNA at 7:30 to talk about? And then Greg at Dark Means will also be on a panel. And Claire's going to, Claire's going to be there as well. So they'll be there and available hopefully for us to ask questions.
Is this like a legislative review?
It's very, it's focused specifically on the vouchers and the impact on education, public education.
Thank you.
There's continued discussion around early childhood education in Georgia. We know that we fund it through lottery funds. And we have to be careful because that sends a message. If it's not embedded in the QBE, it does send a message that is not as important to our legislators as K-12 education. And we believe that pre-kindergarten is part of that ladder of success. And the other component of it is, and every time I'm, I'm in an elementary school, I'm stopped by a pre-kindergarten teacher who says, it's really depressing that I'm teaching in the same school with, and I'm working just as hard as K through fifth grade teachers and I'm paid less. And they're paid less because of the funding stream that the state of Georgia has created. And so if, if we can continue to be vigilant and aware that this is, is an important issue legislatively, that would be helpful. And as we go into the next legislative cycle, it's not too early to start having those discussions with our, our representatives who, who are charged with ensuring that our children have the best education possible.
And Dr. Mayes, there's a bill in the works, and I can't recall whether it's a House bill or Senate bill to increase. to increase the amounts from the scholarships. Whether that's going to happen, I don't know. I know I read that we all received this Capitol watch from Angela Palm. Keep up with the ambiguous and vital information there. But I'll go back and try to find that bill. Obviously, it will be next year.
And I'll just go through a couple other slides very quickly. Mr. Hamel, Ms. Duke and I are continuing to try to wrap up our proposal for fiscal year 2020. But I just want to point out to the board and the public, as the legislature continues to, and they should be congratulated for not imposing austerity cuts for two years in a row, please take a look at the gap between our actual budget in Clark County and what we receive from QBE revenue. There's a wide gap. And then when you look at, and we've talked about this before at the government relations committee level, the blue bar represents the QBE funding. It's a little over a million dollars for transportation. We spend over $8 million in transportation. And so that gap continues to eat away at our overall budget. And this is just another way, a way of looking at our budget. When you look at school nursing, we receive $267,000 in that funding, but we spend $1.2 million in that service. Or transportation, as I mentioned earlier, we receive a little over a million dollars, but we spend $8.6 million in that service. Or when you look at the number of teachers and paraprofessionals that we earn, we earn 938.7 FTEs in teachers, but we actually staff over 1,000. It's actually 1,008 teachers. We don't receive funding formally through the QBE for paraprofessionals, but we have 182. Now, there's a bonus that we receive at the end of the QBE formula where you receive a few hundred dollars for employing paras. But they make more than a few hundred dollars, they make thousands of dollars. And so the fact that we have 182 here is, I believe, shows a commitment. You'll continue to see, there's a gap between what we budget for and what the QBE actually funds. It's a little over $20 million of a gap between what the QBE funding formula in the state of Georgia provides to school systems and what we have deemed to be what's a reasonable program for our children.
Before you, Dr. Means, while you still got that, the QB formula earnings, that's, those are the folks who will get from the state the $3,000 step increase, correct? I mean, that will be state money. The other folks who are not, who are in part of the CCSD budget, we will have to do that.
I think a lot of school districts across the state of Georgia are talking about what to do. What Mr. Davis is referencing is that that $3,000 increase has been slated for teachers or individuals who have some level of a licensure within the school system. And school districts are struggling with, so what do we do with our other employees? Because we're all part of a team. And so our classified employees, our bus drivers, our head custodians, our custodians, that, that dollar amount was not carved out for that sector of employees at all. And school districts are approaching it a lot of different ways.
But I mean, also, and.
So that's another gap.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. But I mean, from the 938 classroom teachers that, that is part of the QB formula, those are the ones who, those are the positions, if I understand this correctly, who, who, who the governor says, we are going to add $3,000 to the, to the teacher, to the certified salary schedule. And so we will have funds for those, but, but not for the additional students, correct?
For the other employees in order.
Yeah, who are certified.
But what happened initially, they had cut that $3,000 back to $2,775. Somehow, and they always say this, they find money. State legislatures and the governors went and found an addition of $86 million to bump it back up to 3,000. Because initially, counselors, social workers, all those people, they were not going to get a raise. But the way I understand it now, the way I read it, like you mentioned those 900 plus there, but all of these certified employees going to get that $3,000 raise. Because they bumped it up. They found $86 million to push it back to 3,000.
The challenge that we see puts in a position of creating a scenario of the haves and have nots. And so our least paid employees in the organization are not slated to receive that, well, that increase that is embedded in fiscal year, fiscal year 20 budget.
So will all of the budgeted teachers receive 3,000 or only the 938?
No, all of them.
Oh, okay.
Okay, here's my question and really I want to clear it up because I don't want to go out of this meeting and say something that's not true. My understanding, if, if Charles and I are both social workers and for the sake of argument, he is one of the five social workers covered by QBE. And I am one of the ones that come out of the CCSD budget. Then what the governor says is that we will, we're going to take, Charles is one of those five. And so he, we're going to allot to Clark County School District, you know, in this case, $15,000 because there's five social workers covered. And each social worker, they will, we're going to increase the salary schedule 3,000 for each one of those. Obviously, we're going to do it for the, for the other school social workers.
I'm not understanding that, Greg. I'm understanding the governor and the state legislatures say that $3,000 is going to go to all certified employees, the teachers, the social workers, the counselors, and the list goes on.
So even if they're not budgeted in the.
Why don't we let Mr. Hamel?
Sure, so. The QB formula is want to fund those people you earn. But the way we've been instructed is we're to give it to everybody regardless of if you're a member or not. So we've got 1,000 teachers and we only earn 938. All 1,000 teachers will get the $3,000 pay, which means they have to come out local funds.
That's what I was.
But we only earn money for the 938.
Right, yeah.
And that's how it was happening. When I came on the board, you were just coming out of those cycles of ripping.
Reduction in force.
Yeah, that one. When you were doing the reductions in force and so again, we had that little pile of money that came in. Everybody ended up getting something. And so I'm looking forward to your recommendation that you bring to us on how we dispose of this.
So it becomes a challenge because if there's a gap in QBE funding and what we're actually budgeting, we're, and there's, there's been this standard that we've applied to ourselves, or maybe I've applied it to myself, of having a balanced budget every year. This becomes budgeting thing, budgeting for our school district becomes very difficult.
For this, for the, how have we traditionally made up from that blue line to that orange line? What, what are the ways that we cobble that together to make that happen?
We are one of, I think, you know, the number changes every year in Georgia. But typically there are about 17 to 20 school districts out of the 180 school districts in Georgia that have set their milage rate at 20 mil. And so this community is one of the 11% of all the school districts in Georgia that has set their milage rate at 20 mils. There's also been a healthy local economy in Athens, Clark County. And so it continues to grow. We've been lucky from that perspective and I think that's the reason why we've been able to balance this out. But it is, it's come at a cost. And so when I'm in elementary schools, teachers will say, I remember when we used to have primary aides. And there were aides in, in the lower class, the lower grade classrooms. When I was at Clark Central earlier this week, one of the administrative assistants in the front office said, I remember when there used to be office aides in the district. And now it's pretty hectic in here. So I, we are, we are resource, resource rich in this school district. I don't want to give you the impression that we, we don't have personnel resources. We are staffed well, but there are, there are a lot of needs when you're dealing with children like the, like the kids that we work with on a day-to-day basis. And so the government relations committee has talked about this concept of when, is there some way to start discussing a QBE formula fix for school districts to have higher rates of poverty? And to equal this out? But the short answer is the local, the local community is paying more of their share to make sure that we have the type of program that we have.
And Dr. Means, you mentioned the part of the 20 mils and we all need to understand this, folks. That 20 mils has been there for several years now. That's the only milage rate that's going to sustain our budget. Now, having said that, with the QBE formula, it should be 64, 60% of the money coming from the state, 40 from the local dollars, it's vice versa.
And here's the breakdown right now of what we projected for 2020. So what Mr. Worthy is suggesting is that 60% should come from the state in terms of funding. Our program in 40 should be, should come from the local. It's actually 46% comes from the state and the local tax is nearly 50%.
You see, when they said that we're going to do away with the austerity cuts, well, they did you somewhat of a favor. I'm not, I'm not jumping up and shouting in the back, okay?
And so we've worked hard to lower class sizes. And you'll see, this is our projected student-teacher ratio. And here is the Georgia DOE class size maximum. Now, we, we have the ability to, to lower that due to us being a charter system, but we've chosen not to approach it that way. We've chosen to try to lower class sizes as much as possible. You'll note, and I think kindergarten to third grade, our numbers are very similar to the DOE max numbers. But please take a look at fourth grade through eighth grade. Our numbers are significantly lower than the DOE recommendation. But I'm a former middle school principal. Sixth graders need, they, they need a low class size as well. And, and that transition to middle school in fourth and fifth grade is really critical. So we believe that having low class sizes is important for everyone and for all of our grade levels. But it does come at a consequence or a cost. And that consequence or cost is that our local taxpayers are picking up more of the share for our program. And so I just, I, what I will share with the board and I'll stop here tonight at least as it pertains to the fiscal year 20 budget. We understand and agree with every recommendation from our staff and our community when they say we should have more. We need more staff in a lot of different areas. We agree. The challenge is that when you, when you take a look at where we are from a funding standpoint, you have to make some difficult choices. And then when you apply that standard of, and we want to create a balanced budget, because in the past, we, we have gone into deficit spending, going into a year because we felt so inclined and we felt that those priorities should be paid for. And if it meant going into deficit, so be it. I think as a board, it will be interesting to hear your perspective on, do you still want to hold that standard of having a balanced budget? I, from a leadership perspective, I, I do subscribe to that theory. I believe that that's a strong thing to do. But there are a lot of needs that we have in our school district as well. So, Mr. President, board members, that's the conclusion of my report. Again, I'm open for any questions if you have.
On, on the milage rate, so can you, can you, again for the whole board, can you talk about how this recommendation progresses into becoming the reality and generating dollars?
So the process is one in which in the month of May, Mr. Hamel and I will go out into the community. We will have listening sessions. We will share with the community our recommendation for an overall budget. And then we will bring to you a final recommendation. Typically, it's in June that you then endorse. If you approve the milage rate of 20 mils, then that's where it is set based on your vote. But I believe traditionally, we've had at least three different listening sessions. We place those dates and times in the local newspaper to make sure that the public is aware of, of these hearing days. I'm really, again, Mrs. Wickwire has been working overtime and really hard, but we publicized a, just a listening session around the fiscal year 2020 budget. And so we had that, that session this past Tuesday at Whitehead Road Elementary School. We had a good turnout where I was able to share with people just the background of this, this work. We had some prior board members really made some good suggestions to, to me, I believe, in saying that we, we as an administrative team need to be more active in getting out and talking with people prior to setting dates in the paper and saying, here's our recommendation. So I wanted to have a conversation with people so they understood what are all the components that go into building a budget. And then at the end, we actually even had an opportunity for people to give us feedback on when we do look at initiatives, what, what do they value?
And this is, I mean, and this dovetails nicely, I think, into our, for the conversation around advanced ed actually, because this is where the confidence in the board, this is where the rubber hits the road, I think. You know, if, if, if there is confidence in the school board to be governing well and confidence in the superintendent to be managing well, that, that rubber is eroding in, in people supporting this milage rate and, and supporting our ability to make up that gap. And if that, if, if the time comes and that confidence falls apart, then that's, that gap is what's at jeopardy.
That's a really great point. And so it's not necessarily advanced ed that you should worry about. It's, it's making sure that the public continues to support us.
Maybe we can.
Dr. Knott, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I was going to say, in our, one of our joint meetings with the commissioners and the legislators, there was concern about the milage rate being so high. And I heard a couple of questions that made me think that, you know, it would be nice if we would have our commissioners join us in these listening sessions or invite our representatives to join us in these listening sessions too. When you're talking about this with the community, so, you know, we can all be in the same room and they can hear firsthand what people's concerns would be.
We have the budget process coming up. That would be perfect for them to be a part of.
That was actually my question. In terms of the budgeting process, so just to get a feel for, especially for new people as well on board, where the board intersects with the district's planning? So, so could you just kind of lay out how that's, how that works, sure, has been working?
So we want to try to do it a little different this year, base again on some feedback from the board. So in the month of May, we'll bring to you, hopefully our working session in May, we'll bring to you some recommendations. And we will seek your, your, your thoughts on what do you think? And how are things, can you hit behind and support some of our ideas? I think in the past, Dr. Knott, it's been more of a situation of, here's what we're recommending. And are you going to approve it or not? And so what I want to do is add a intermediate step, if you will, of, here's our thoughts and here's some options. When, here's our recommendation, what do you think? You will see that there's not a lot of wiggle room in our budget. I mean, there's not, right now, we believe that there, there's about $500,000 that we can, we can find to usher in new initiatives. And so $500,000 is a lot of money, but on a budget that we're projecting to be $161 million, that's not, that's not a lot of funds. In addition, and this is something that, that the public should know and the board should know, every time you think about a position, typically we, we estimate that that costs when it's salaries and benefits, it's about $75,000. $75,000 to $80,000 is the cost of a position. And sometimes when you think about positions in the social, emotional learning area, so our counselors and social workers and school psychologists, that number actually goes up a little bit more. And so when we talk about, we're committed to. And so, when we talk about, we're committed to expanding our SEL staffing. Um, for example, as one of our options, you, you can't get a lot of staff out of $500,000. Uh, and, and so, that makes it, that makes it difficult. Uh, and, and it's interesting, I had a chance to meet with all of our department leads today to go over their key performance indicators, and there's a lot of good work happening in, in our schools. I'll give you a quick story around our nursing program. We're, we're able to track how many kids are coming in, uh, with chronic diseases. Uh, we're able to track how many kids are coming in for urgent care, um, and, and we're doing good work. And I think the board has, uh, in the past, supported expanding nursing programs, uh, in this school system. But we also know that there are five of our, uh, nurses right now who are at 75% um, allocation. And it would be nice to have those individuals work full-time because the money that they're making in our school district, they could almost double if they went to a hospital. So, they're truly, they're truly working in the name of public health and working with children, and they love being in our, our school system. Um, we've hired, for the first time this year, a half-time special education nurse who has a caseload of 70 students, uh, who are special needs. And some of those students are magically fragile. In the past, if, before we had this position, there were administrative assistants at the office level who were doing some pretty technical and dangerous medical maneuvers with these very sick children. Um, and so, our ability to maybe make that a full-time position is something we should consider. But for every dollar, and if, these are all good decisions and all good options, that means you, you can't do something else if we're sticking to the concept and the standard of having a balanced budget.
So, just to follow up, kind of in anticipation of the, the rollout of May work session. So, so the tentative budget's 161?
Yes, sir.
And that's about a 6% increase?
It's actually, um, it's an increase of almost $10 million.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And, and primarily, most, most of that money is coming from the state to pay for that $3,000 increase.
Okay. Thank you, I'm gonna bet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to section I of our agenda. This is a few items that have been proposed to include in our consent agenda next week. The first is, uh, a number of field trips. Any questions or concerns around those field trips? Overnight field trip, overnight and out-of-state field trips? So, again, ju- just, you know, for me, it's useful to, to remember why we're talking about this stuff. So, each of these items, someplace in our policy says, it is a subject matter that we as board need to vote on. So, that, that's the, that's the only stuff that we get to see. So, this is, we have a policy that says overnight and out-of-state field trips, the board has to approve. So, that's, that's why we're talking about this one. Any questions around this, or should we include it in our consent agenda?
Consent, the field trips.
Okay, thank you. And again, uh, uh, if anybody does not want us to be part of the consent agenda for any reason, they can pull it off the consent agenda, and we can vote on it separately. Um, the next item is, uh, three columns partnership for fiscal year 2018. Questions? Yes.
Um, yeah, so I, I do think it should be a part of the consent agenda, but I do, I have some, um, questions or concerns. Um, so I understand that it's from, it's something we've already agreed previously, right? From fiscal year, um, 2018, and so it's really paying the balance of what we agreed to. But I did have some questions, and, uh, Dr. Barry, I saw your, your question as well, more so around, like, the, one, the effectiveness of the program. Um, also, as it relates to, um, I think what I read was that some of our employees, then, one of the trade-offs is that they get to have certification as a, um, board-certified behavior analysis. And so, yeah, I just, I, I sort of have a few more questions about what that looks like, how effective it is, particularly given the total amount of the contract. Um, and then, as well, um, as it mentioned in the notes here, uh, what did? It was related to the board certi- certification. I can't find it, I read it. But, um, just trying to figure out, like, like, what all that looks like. Um, and how are individuals who are also assisting with that work, um, what are the educational benefits that they're receiving as well, right? So, we, we know that even if it's financial, University of Georgia, they're receiving some benefits from that. The students in training are receiving benefits. Um, and so, my question is more so around, like, other stakeholders that are involved in this. One, the students, what are the, the benefits that we've seen? And then, secondly, those people who are working underneath those, um, the graduate assistants, um, who are employees of the district, like, what type of educational benefits do they receive as well? So, that's more so for future, like, I guess, moving forward, but...
But, so, if, if I could, um, so, I don't know if you want to talk way into those things right now, or just talk about when we could expect a, a larger conversation around?
May I suggest that we pull this off of the April agenda? So, I think from a, from a process standpoint, I mean, let's go on a higher level and not just this topic. It, these are all really good qu- questions. And, um, Ms. Hill, who's our executive director and special ed, uh, I, I know Dr. Myers is taking copious notes, but if, these are, this, this is a good discussion. We can come back to you in May. If you have a, a, a list of questions that you have for us, we, we can answer those questions in a very succinct way. I think what we were trying to do with this agenda item was to pay what needs to be paid.
Right, right. Which is why I think it's important for it to be consent right now.
But if the board wants, and, and I think that's appropriate, to have a deeper dive of what is this program? How much, how much are we paying for this? What is the return on investment? I think that's really valuable. Um, and so, I just don't, I don't want to get confused with this, this very procedural thing that we have to do now. If there, so there's two things we can do. We can either pull it off the agenda now, or I'm hearing maybe the board is requesting an overview of the three columns program and then bring it back, and so...
Yeah, because it's something, I mean, from what I've read, like, we agreed to pay, you know, so it's something we need to do.
I don't want UGA to come after you.
And they're probably, they're doing, like, great, you know, it's just more so wondering about the, the...
I think that's healthy, yeah. Uh, so, we can be prepared to come back to the board to give you an overview of three columns and, and do an analysis of, is this an effective program or not?
Yeah.
Right? So...
Okay, yeah, and, and I think we, so, so this is, we had a, a bit of a conversation, I think when we first approved it, but I think, you're right, these follow-up, these check-ins especially are, are, are important to have. Um, Dr. Yan, would you like to pull it off of the, the, the total agenda? Or just have, just as long as we follow up with this information, is that?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'll defer to other people, but I'm fine with it being a consent.
Dr. Myers, would a May or June date be sufficient in terms of being prepared? What day would you, which month?
We can do either.
Okay. Well, we'll be ready, we'll come back in May with an overview.
And actually, the...
You can, go ahead.
The program this year is even different than what this proposal and funding was for. So, we've made modifications to the program as it exists right now. It doesn't even exist exactly as it explained before that year, 18, not even fiscal year 19. So, we've already made some adjustments, and we're very much interested in hearing your thoughts and sharing with you why, and the reasoning, and further recommendations we have to maximize the benefit of a partnership between these four students.
Thank you.
Yeah. Donna, is this, is this the, uh, Cleveland Road program that, that I, I witnessed?
Um, partially, there are, there are some of the professors that were through the Hoover Institute that helped support a classroom that's out at Cleveland Road. Um, but if, as it exists, what we're asking for the funding to pay the debt? No, it didn't exist in that way at this time. This is, it's just an old bill.
Okay, you did.
No, um, I, I agree that this should remain on the consent agenda because it is just what is remaining of what we owe on this contract program. But it would definitely be worthwhile to hear more about this. And then, the only other thing I'm curious about is, this is an ongoing contract? So, they're, it's an annual contract? And so, it's, this is in the budget in some form coming up?
It is, but I think, you know, so it's really interesting, we're having this conversation on the hills of what we just discussed with the budget. So, I think it, I'm really pleased that as a board, you want to dig into this some more and look at the return on investment, because you may give us counsel of, are, are there other ways we can invest in serving students? Um, and, and so, it, it is year-to-year, um, but it is not, um, an ongoing, um, non-reviewed commitment to the program.
Has it already been approved for next year?
No, no, ma'am.
And when you say ongoing, like, the year-to-year, uh, contract, is it for the amount that we're, like, that we're requested to pay? Or is it for that total, like, how much is, what's the total amount on the year?
In, at year 18, the total amount was $289,91.
Okay, so that's for the yearly, correct?
Okay, $289 is yearly, correct?
And this is, this is all in alignment with the work of this board, right? So, last year, you charged us as a, as an administrative team to work with our professional development school district to, to have tighter metrics around our commitment to the PDSD. And, and, and we'll, we'll bring a report, because that was part of your request as well. There should be some type of written report brought back to the board. So, I, I think this is all in a, this is all in alignment with the work that you've asked us to do. We'll, we'll be ready in May.
Okay.
For an overview of three columns.
Thank you. Uh, and so, I'm here for the, for the time being, to keep us on the consent agenda.
Okay, right.
Um, the next item is the approval of Hillsman projector purchase.
I don't want to jinx anything at all, um, but things are moving well with Hillsman, the construction of Hillsman. Um, when I, um, when the project first, and it's been really neat for me. Um, I was with Greg Davis and Dr. Knox when the Hillsman LSGT visualized what that's going to look like. So, to see it all materialize has been, been very nice. We initially thought that the construction date would be done by December or January of 2020. Um, we are ahead, ahead of schedule, and then we'll just, um, I'll hedge better. Uh, we don't have a precise date because we don't know what the weather is going to look like. Um, we've had a very nice dry spell that allows construction to, to move forward. Um, if that continued to move in that direction, we don't think that the kids, uh, at, at Hillman will have to start the, the, the school year for a long period of time in whole games. They will have to start there. Um, but we, we hope to, to get them into their new building as soon as possible. And, and that's becoming more and more of a reality. So, part of that reality is, we have to equip those classrooms with projectors. And that's what this agenda item is asking for your permission for.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, the next item is to approve student device purchases, purchase for grades seven through 10.
I, I have a question to share about this. I, I don't know if this raises to the level of pulling it off consent, but, uh, I would like to maybe have a discussion with you, um, offline just about kind of the philosophy of where we're going in the district about computers for students. And so, I'll, I'll just leave it there, maybe somebody else has something else to say.
Yes, Ms. Davis.
Yeah, I, I did, and I, and I apologize for kind of springing this on the board, but at about 4:30, I, I forwarded, uh, just a series of questions and, and, um, you know, I don't know, I, I did, Dr. Means did acknowledge that you received the questions. I don't know where we're at in terms of, of, of the information, but I would give...
In, in the same vein as what Dr. Knox talked about?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, it, you know, because we've had, uh, I mean, just so I can kind of get it out there, I know that, that at one time, when I first got on the board, you know, the vision was that each student would have their own, his or her own device and, and one-to-one ratio, and they would go home. And then there was a big discussion about, uh, at least a concern I had was in terms of internet access, and, and we even had board members say, well, they can use McDonald's. Uh, so, I mean, it was, it was, it, it was a confusing time, um, for, for me because we were spending so much money on it. And, and, but anyway, we rolled it out, and then the next piece I heard is that at one time, we had one tech, tech person per building to kind of manage the computers. And then the next, uh, time I kind of tapped into that, we were, we were down to just a few schools having, having people assigned. And this is all before your tenure. And, uh, and then I, and then last year, I started hearing about schools that, that decided to just keep the computers within the school, um, for, for, for various reasons, whether it's to maintain them, whether it's to keep them charged. Uh, so, I just don't know where we're, where we're at with this, and it's, and if we're, if we're still committed to this one-to-one ratio, and, um, and so, how much money are we, are we talking about? I mean, because you only talked about one sliver of the, of the computers we've got out there. So, I, I just have a lot of questions about, um, are we, you know, what we're planning on doing and happening? There's a whole question of how it's being integrated into the classroom. At one time, we had someone in this building who actually supervised that in terms of curriculum, and, and, and that person was eliminated before you even got here.
I appreciate those, those disclaimers, I, I didn't touch anything. Um, and this is probably an opportune time for me to introduce to the board as a body and to the public. Uh, we do have our new chief academic officer in place. Mr. Brandon Gaskins is, uh, here. Welcome, Brandon. Brandon comes from Fogan County, uh, where he led, uh, transformation work in South Fogan, uh, in that region in particular. And we're really excited to have Brandon and his, his leadership here. And so, let me bring it full circle to say, I think the conversation is a worthy one. Um, if, when I entered the district, the number one issue that teachers said, we need help right away, was around the literacy program. Uh, they said, we're confused, we don't know what we're supposed to teach. We have seven different programs. We know that we have children who've transferred one to one school to the next, and they're, 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 they're working with a different program. And we attacked that, that work last year. The second issue, uh, it was a close second, was what are we doing with this one-to-one initiative? And parents and teachers alike have said, we have sacrificed instruction in the name of, to the one-to-one initiative. Um, we have two main technology leaders in our entire organization for a district that says it's one-to-one. So, we are woefully, uh, understaffed if we're truly, um, trying to integrate technology. Um, I'm not a, uh, technology education expert, but it should never be about the technology, but, but about integrating it and supporting instruction. And I, I think past philosophies in the district was more of, we spent this money on it, so we really want to see you use it. Um, and so, I think it sends a lot of these messages to instructors. Um, I want to give Brandon an opportunity to get his bearings, but I believe, I believe the, you are, you are correct. Um, and it is appropriate for us to bring back to you, uh, so what are we doing with this? Uh, what, what is our, what's our vision in, in, in the future, uh, with our one-to-one initiative?
And I'd just like to add to that. Yeah, we're further down the road than we were, uh, when this started in this district in terms of research on how technology affects children. And so, I think that should also, you know, where, where we're at in, in research on that should also inform what we do that's evidence-based.
Yes. Teachers have said, they, they're just, there were some significant organizational decisions that were made as a result of our commitment to one-to-one. So, when I, when, when you walk through Clark Central, there was a decision made to not put lockers into that, that renovated school because everyone had a device. Um, and, and so, what's happened over time, if you talk to children, talk to the kids, they'll tell you the truth. What's happened is that teachers are supplementing it with, they're making their own paper copies, which I don't know what the trickle, I mean, candidly, we haven't really done a ROI in terms of what the real trickle-down is. I suspect that our... I suspect that our copying costs are up in the organization because people are going to, they're going to textbooks that they trust, they're making copies and saying, so here class, read this before we start our next unit. Teachers have said that they, they are, they're not, they're not bound to a textbook, but at the same time, there should be some type of skill that is taught to students to reference a textbook. This is, this is a large, what we believe to be more of an instructional issue. And I think in the past, what's happened is that we've kind of, we've kind of laid it at the feet of the technology department to say, well, you answered a question. I think Mr. Gaskins and I would say, this is a larger issue. And then I guess the last thing I would share with you is that for every dollar that's coming out of SLOSS, for, for this work, remember those softball student athletes who came to the board meeting last month who said, what about our field? Or principals who will say, I do need some more security cameras? Or there's a lot of different needs that we have from a facility standpoint that could help kids. So when would you like that, that report to come back to you? I think it's appropriate.
Does he need a day or two?
And we have two great instructional technology educators who we would also want to bring them into the loop. I, I don't want, I have some days in mind. I don't want to sound like we're kicking the can down the road, but we do have a new employee here. And I think there has been some work done around this issue. I've asked our team to look at it, not to scrap it, but to say, what's best for kids at this point?
Let me ask a clarifying question. In, how does this agenda item relate to that conversation? Recommendation that we buy these computers regardless of that conversation? Or are they tied together in some way?
The, the computers that are going to be recycled are four years old. And they're, they're, they're becoming obsolete. And so regardless of what this discussion lead us to, we do need to refresh that, that, that current group of devices. But I believe we're, so I think you do need to make the investment and consider this recommendation. But how those devices are used, I think will, could have a significant impact on teaching and learning starting next school year. There are still a lot of, there are a lot of teachers who believe that there's a mandate from the district to use devices and use it despite some of their best thoughts around what instruction should look like. And so if we could come back to you in August or September to say, so we've looked at this a little bit more, and here's, here's some of our recommendations. And here's some of the messaging we want to send to teachers about how to integrate technology. I think that could be not only beneficial to the community, to the board, but if we can get the right message to our teachers, maybe that, that pressure that some people are feeling that has been imposed in the past with messaging could help instruction.
Great. Do you have a question, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I'm just going to say that, that I certainly want to pull this from the agenda and.
From the consent agenda?
Yes.
You're referring to?
Yes. I'm going to pull that, and it's going to take, I mean, if you want, it's going to take a hard sell next week. I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done, but if, you know, I just, because we have a, we, we're talking about $2 million, we're talking about, we have the exact number that we need, 4,457. And just where they go, I, I'm not, I'm not clear. So, so if we have a, you know, a plan in place where these are where these computers have to go, then, then you could, you know, I could be won over. But I mean, right now, I'm just, I have, I have, I have more questions now than I did when I came in.
Hold on one second. I think to this, I think it'd be really helpful if you articulate exactly the information you're looking for.
I put them in an email.
And, and, and I think, yeah, the connection between the larger conversation and this particular budget item would be important.
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Davis was.
Mr. Davis referred to internet.
Ms. Davis is about to.
You've got to be quick to deal with. No, I want to, because I have not interrupted all night long. It's been difficult, but.
You have a floor.
Thank you. I just, quick question. Can this money be spent on anything else? This is the E-SLOSS for technology.
Within your E-SLOSS budget, it could, it could be shipped to another SLOSS project, yes.
But not a general.
Not a general fund. And so again, we have, I know that Taylor has patiently and consciously prepared this whole, what is it, the technology plan where these things do age off. And we have been systemically replacing them, as I understand it, right? And so we're just at that place where it's time to spend this money again on this particular item. I just want to make sure that we're, if that is a part of our mandate, that we are aware of that mandate and not, not just.
So I appreciate the question for clarity. I think what, and I think what Mr. Duke will tell you is that based on the cycle of the equipment that we, we have currently, this current cycle needs to be replaced. And so from a, just from a simply, simply from a device perspective, these, these current devices are old or what's happening is that we're, we're spending a lot of time repairing them. And so if this is tabled or delayed, that means we're going into the next school year with an older cycle of laptops that students will use. I think there's a separate question in terms of, so what's the impact of the instruction with our commitment to the one-to-one initiative? I believe that's a second, separate.
It's a totally different.
That's a separate conversation.
And, and are the programs that we're accessing, again, cloud-based? Are we, are we store things on the, on the device, on servers or here? So I mean, all of that to me is some of, some of the information that would be helpful. Four years is old for some people, but for people on fixed income, we keep our computers 10 years now.
Mr. Were there any comments?
Yes, Mr. Davis mentioned earlier about internet access. And it's true that when we first started this, it was rumored that kids had to go to McDonald's or wherever to access internet. Do remember now, AT&amp;T, and I believe it was Georgia Power too, maybe both. I can't recall, but they gave a big grant. And the internet access has been enhanced. Let's keep that in mind. And maybe all of it, all of the kids are able to get internet access. Now, because seemingly rumors or whatever, all of that went away.
Because the computers are staying in the schools.
What?
Computers are staying in the schools, but.
Dr. Duckman?
Yes, so I was thinking sort of along the same lines of them being older, four years. But I think the two conversations are very much related because depending on what we want them to be doing with the computers sort of dictates whether a four-year-old computer can do it or not. And so if, if they're, and I don't know what they're doing with them in the classrooms. But if it's something that is still okay, and I don't know what the state of these computers are, are they able to do what we want them to do, what we would like them to be better? Or are they really not able to do what, what people are using them for? And I think the only way to answer that is to know what people are using them for in the classroom. And if that's something that we actually want them to be using them for.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Dr. Max. A couple more comments and we'll kind of figure out and move on.
As a community person, community person working with children with this technology, my concern was the inconsistency when, you know, with students and technology. One some, having a technology, some not. There was never a free, we couldn't find free internet service for, for people anywhere. I think that AT&amp;T did offer like a $10 bill one time. But other than that, but when it came to actually working with the children with their, their classwork, I want to know if some of these funds can go first of all towards instructional technology. Actually working with teachers to show them how to use the Google Classroom, how to put information up there so that grandparents and tutors can actually help these students after school. Because some of them couldn't get their homework done. We spent some of the time not getting it mapped. So we spent the time Googling YouTube and all these other places to figure out how to, you know, do common core math. So can the funds be used for instructional technology?
It can be, it can be used for purchasing equipment, but it can't be used for personnel.
Dr. Gannon and Dr. Knox?
I was just going to quickly say whether or not it should be on consent. I think, I don't know that I would be comfortable pulling it off consent. I would definitely want to hear from teachers. Because I think this is, they're the individuals that really, if you pull it off consent, and going back to your question as far as like, how is it being used? What does it mean? What are the implications for their time in the classroom? If, what is it, April, we have what, five weeks left? No, probably seven or eight weeks left in school. What does it mean? Then, you know, there's summer break. And so what, how might it shift their work in the fall? I mean, I definitely think the larger conversation is important as well. But for me, I'm more interested in what it means, you know, for them if this isn't fun. And it could mean all great things. And I mean, and I'm not a, I'm not a fan, I should just say, I'm not a fan of one-to-one technology. But I also understand that I'm not in the classroom. And I'm not, this doesn't have, this can have implications maybe that we may not be aware of. Whereas if it, if it is a more long-term plan, going in a particular direction, if eventually we want to diminish one-to-one and, yeah, I don't know, whatever, go one for. Or whatever, you know, instructors are saying, I think it's important to have that.
Are these for one-to-one?
Yes, it supports the one-to-one.
Dr. Knox? So just, just to make specific questions and so forth. It might help us, I think it would help me, this is rattling around in my head, to at least know what the financial plan is. So, so the seven through 10 is aging out. Where do we stand on the others? Because I don't really remember, so, so the other grades. So is, in other words, trying to read people's minds here, is this a point where you say, okay, we're aging out and maybe we would transition? Or is there another checkpoint that's coming up pretty soon or not? So that, just from a budgetary standpoint, it's sometimes there's a point where you, you go ahead and you know that there's another time later, not too long from now maybe, and sometimes it's not. So I don't know where we stand, I forgot.
And I think for clarity, so, so it seems clear that we don't want this to be included in our consent agenda items, which would be all voted on as a package next week. We're not going to do that. So this one, right now it stands, we will get it queued up to vote on separately next week. And it's always in the prerogative of Dr. Means to talk to his staff and make the same recommendation, make a different recommendation. But certainly he would, I know, value all of the questions as, as he figures out what recommendation to have teed up for us next week. Is that fair?
In my head, I was like, I don't think we should pull it off, yeah. On the agenda.
Yeah. So, any, any questions? I'm confused. So, and just help me from a clarity standpoint. So this is an agenda item because our technology leader has made a determination from a technology standpoint that these devices have aged out. And that's simply what this agenda item is saying, that, that from a technology standpoint, they've aged out and in order for children to use these devices effectively, however we decide to use it from an instructional standpoint, they're, they're no longer relevant. And keep in mind that they are teenagers. And so they dropped them, they, they don't take care of them as well as, well, I, I know, I may have dropped mine once or twice as well, right? So, so when you think about the wear and tear and you think about the age, that's the issue. So I would just, I would encourage the board to think about it. As I'm listening to you, I hear two different items. And I think it's fair for you to say, and to ask the question, if we're not going to, are we, do we want to continue to invest in technology through SLOSS? That's one question. I think the second question is, so how are we using technology to advance instruction? That's a very different, that's where the one-to-one conversation comes into play.
And if I might add, how do both of those questions relate to buying computers in April of 2019?
So I, without Mr. Duke being here, but having been in the business long enough, if we're not, if you don't purchase these computers in the month of April, they won't be here when the school year starts. And so kids will go into the next school year with devices that we have deemed, just from simply a technology standpoint, to be dated. But I, I believe that your, your, the conversation around, the conversation around what's the impact to the one-to-one initiative is something that I'm also interested in. And I, I, I understand your concerns fully. But I'm just concerned about the, the, the simple technology request that's being presented to the board. And I just, I don't want to mix the instructional conversation that, that's worthy to have, that we should have with the simple transaction of we have old devices.
I think I'm hearing from the, from some of my colleagues that I think we could get comfortable with it if, if we kind of understood how these pieces, how we should anticipate these pieces fitting together. And so, so the conversation around instruction and around SLOSS and, and the urgency of buying these things in April 2019, how do these things all fit together and why this still makes sense as an April 2019 purchase?
So you can still have the conversation around what's the impact instructional way? If it's an older device or newer device, you just have to, I think you will be impacting children adversely if we don't make the decision to purchase the devices.
Yeah, I guess I should, that if, if we just knew when we were going to have that conversation and how that relates. But it's not that we need to have that conversation next week. They don't anticipate, are thinking of to have that or have the time for that. But I think, you know, putting a flag on, on a future work session or whenever it is to have those larger conversations. And then I'm getting a little bit clearer of the imperative of April 2019 for this computer purchase.
And I think that's where it gets confusing. Because while that sounds logical, I also hear board members saying, yes, but if we make a commitment to buying $2 million-plus dollars worth of technology, are we just perpetuating and continuing this, this discussion that needs to, needs to happen? And so I, I, I understand, I understand your dilemma. I guess I would just pulse it back to you to say, just simply, I think these are two different topics. And if we try to blend it, it becomes much more complicated. The issue that's before you is we have cycled out, we have old technology that has also dealt with a lot of wear and tear. Do you want us to purchase new devices for children? Now, how we use those devices can be discussed at a later date.
Kind of for clarification purposes, here's what my concern is. My concern is, we, we've got a middle school. And we, we look at their number of students and we say, okay, you need this many computer replacements. Based on your, your student population, your, your, this is seventh, seventh through 10, right? This is, okay. Your seventh and eighth grade students need replacement. There's so many students you got in the building, so this is what we're going to deliver you. But if the, if the middle school isn't practicing one-on-one, then those computers, in my mind, and this is very simplistic, they will. Yeah, they will, they, they will say, okay, Ms. Jones, here, here's your class set of computers, Mr. Smith, so on and so on. And then we've got 250 over there that, my God, they look nice and shiny. Let's make sure we dust them occasionally. That, that is, that is my, that's, that's my number one. I know they have to be in the schools. But if they're not going home with the kids, then we don't need nearly with the numbers. Or we need to get the same number, but spread them out to more grades. That's my question.
And we don't have internet access for all the students, but we're talking about one-to-one, I still.
Okay, but anyway.
How does this, how does this look like with testing and stuff like that? Like I think there could be, I mean, I don't know, I'm not, again, I'm not a fan. But I think the larger, there, there are other pieces. I think if we're thinking from a board perspective to build the shape, either that conversation or listen to the direction that we're going. Because I'm guessing at some point another, a certain amount of computers will be up for renewal. for renewal, you know, and at that point.
$3 million last year.
I think sort of being, being intentional, for me, I think the importance of being intentional and being sure that we know that there are no, it sounds even strange saying adverse effects from not having a computer, but I'm just saying logistically, from testing, from what goes on in the classroom for, you know, teachers and things of that, things of that nature.
Okay, so we're gonna, you know, I don't know how we move from here, except, you know, I heard at the beginning, you know, when those questions were raised, that there will be more information forthcoming to address some of these concerns, to address all of these concerns actually. So, I think that has to happen. And again, I think that's separate from this question. What questions, I guess, like, what information will we need from anybody to, to be able to make this decision to go forward? If we're saying we can't make this decision until we get the use and how it's gonna be integrated into the classroom, if we can't make the decision until then, then it needs to just.
Then we should delay it.
Just delay it entirely. But if, if we can make the decision based on the practice that we're following, because we did ask for this and Taylor has been very judicious about bringing to us, you know, the, what is it, how do you call it? The depreciation of these devices and that whole process, that, that, this is a piece of that process. And so, if, if we're not gonna honor that commitment that we had to operate, then let's figure out something else.
Well, I, I think what we've done is pulled it off, the consent agenda for sure, I think we've clearly communicated the swirl of, of concerns. I think a lot is in your court to figure out what kind of recommendation you make on our, on our agenda. And I think, like John mentioned, there could be some very good, there could be response, no matter what direction we choose to go with curriculum, but it still makes sense to do this. I don't know, you know? But it, but that could be part of, yeah, that could be part of the management recommendation going forward.
So, I think, just to echo what Greg was saying, I think that the concern a lot of us had was that, are we, do we want to spend $2 million on something that we may decide six months down the line is not something that we want to continue doing?
Oh, we need half.
Oh, right. But, so then, as I was thinking about it, this isn't all of the computers that are out there, so I wonder if it might be the case that we buy these computers now with the initiative that we currently have, but if we change our initiative that we can spread these computers now.
Yeah, that's, that's, and that's, and that's, the only way we can know that is from.
So, this has been a very healthy conversation. And please, I, I, for the poets say and for the board say, because we haven't really had this discussion as a group, so I'm aligned with you. I, I'm, I'm aligned, but then I'm struggling with what the next step should be. And I want to, it, because ultimately, your, your, your conversation is going back to instruction and it is going back to what's the impact of these devices from an instructional standpoint. And so, it's unfair to you to just put it simply in a category of this is expenditure to refresh the cycle. So, I, I, I hear you, I think that's fair. And so, if that's where you are, my counsel would be that we table this, that we pull it from the agenda, allow Mr. Gaskins and I and others to come up with a more comprehensive conversation around technology use in the intersection of technology with instruction, if that's where you are.
Are you planning to do that by next Thursday?
No.
The reason I'm saying that now, because what you said a few minutes ago, and I'm right in line with that, folks, you're talking about teaching children. And if you don't order, order these devices in April, you aren't gonna have the time for the opening of school, but if this is the year 2018, or 2019 and '20.
And I think if, you know, again, if you were, if that's, if your recommendation is to pull this, I think there'd be, you know, open, open ears to that from the board, if you recommend, if you go back to Taylor and say, is there, you know, what are the, what are the effects of pulling or the effects of buying them now versus buying them next month versus not buying them at all? And there's some permutation where it always makes sense?
I think this is the difficult part that Mr. Duke has been placed in. This is not, this is not a Taylor Duke issue. This is really an instructional issue. Taylor Duke is just simply saying, you've asked me to place this on a cycle. I have a cycle. These are old computers. And so, what do you want to do with computers? But your questions are really fair. I just, I want to be, I want to be candid with you and I'm in, I'm in alignment with your, your questions, but that, that's a much larger comprehensive discussion. And Greg is absolutely, Mr. Davis is absolutely correct. If you make the investment in, in a small way or in a large way, you are in essence aiding the issue that you want to talk about. So, it's a really, I, I, I believe to honor your governance struggle, it would be prudent for us to pull this off.
But, and maybe just say, but, and I appreciate that, but I mean, I'd still see basically two discussions. I mean, my discussion was how many computers are, are needed at XYZ Middle School based on how they utilize them.
That's an instructional question.
Right, that's an instructional question, but it doesn't, it doesn't drill down to, well, if, 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 if there's classroom sets, how are they using them instructionally? Is it effective? Is it unaffected? That, that's a deeper question.
And I think he's saying that we're gonna have, we can now have a time to have a conversation because we're not pressed with a decision next week.
I think Dr. Maddis may frame it and I think she's kind of looking at me like, yes, I've said this 10 minutes ago, but she's absolutely right. And I think it actually captures the, the challenge that Clark County has. And, and we're, so here's my concern. I'm not a fan of where we are as, as a, as a, as an organization from an instructional technology standpoint. I'm also concerned because if you listen to our conversation, it's been more about the device and now instructors are able to use the device to expand instruction. And, and so, but that, again, bringing it full circle, that's not Mr. Duke's challenge and that's, that's not his objective with this agenda item. His, his sole purpose was to share with the community and the board, these, these computers have run its course, they're old, and so, do you want to refresh them or not? I think Mr. Davis, to answer that question, we could purchase the $2 million-plus dollars' worth of devices and, and have a deeper conversation about instruction later. But if we want to ensure that those devices are, are in the district to start the school year, you have to make a decision. But the, the larger conversation of how we're gonna, how, how do we want to instruct, and, and I think Dr. Maddis said something that we've all ignored, that we shouldn't, how do we want to support staff in using instructional technology? It's criminal that we claim to be a one-to-one school district and we have two instructional technology specialists in the district. That's wrong. That's wrong to teachers, that's wrong to those two people, that, that's just not right. And, and, and so, and it goes back to our budget conversation. So, what, what value are we placing on this? Are we supporting? I think teachers will tell you, they feel that they're also trapped. And so, if you want to make a governance decision of saying, let's take time to, to reflect on this discussion, I think that's okay. Because I, I, I don't think you can, as I've listened to you, you can't separate out, are we just buying computers or what's the instructional impact? I don't, I don't think it's that simple. And if you collectively as a governing board are saying, yes, we know it's not that simple, so what should we do? My counsel and my request to you would be, allow Mr. Gaskins and our instructional technology team and I, and teachers to dig into this and bring back to you a recommendation. And if we have to come back and, if we have to go to our staff and tell them, hold on for a year, you're gonna have, you have a device that's gonna be five years old, I would rather have that clarity of where we want to go as an organization versus purchasing something that eventually this, this group may say we should go in a different direction. So, my counsel is to pull it from the agenda.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
That's fine, yeah, that, that sounds good.
And so, the only thing, and I'm, I'm gonna lay the rest without the gas of great decision and I'm excited about all of this, this is the conversation that we had that got us to bringing Mr. Gaskins here in the first place. So, let's go back to why this might be, and I just want us to consider, because Taylor hadn't said anything, we've got here to answer this question. Last time we were faced with this, it was because of a technology shift and the devices that we had weren't supported. And so, as long as we're not looking at a situation where we, by not making this decision, we have taken away whatever capabilities we have, then I'm good.
No, you have. The, the kids are gonna have older devices.
Older is fine if they work, but we came to a place, one time we had to switch to Chromebooks because the other devices weren't supported.
It, so, it, it will have an impact in terms of, for your, your teachers who are on the higher end, they're pioneers in using technology, it'll have an impact on them. It will have an impact on the, the number of hours that our, our tech team will spend in supporting older devices. It will have an impact on our budget to purchase new pieces for keyboard or new cords or all of those different things that when you, when you have an aging infrastructure or technology, that's, that's the, that's the impact. But can I give you another perspective? That's one component. The other perspective is, if collectively as a school system, we do want to have more of a blended model of instruction, where there are textbooks being used, we need to start talking about that now because that's gonna have an impact on the fiscal year 2021 budget. Because right now, what, what this district has done, if you remember when we went to our, our ELA curriculum, we didn't have, most districts this size would have a substantial line item for textbook purchases. There would be some type of five to seven-year cycle of reviewing curriculum. That's not present here right now. Because I think there was a, there, there was a mentality of, we have, we have laptops, we're one-to-one, we don't need textbooks. And so, what's happened is that we haven't refreshed that component of, of our work. So, if you remember, we had a, a citizen come to the board about a year ago and said, I'm tutoring kids and look at the worksheets that you're giving these kids. That's because we haven't tended to the issue of having a line item for textbooks that's really healthy and commensurate with the size district that we have. And, and so, I think this is a very large conversation that, that has ripple effects.
Thank you, if we're excited to have it.
We'll have it before June.
All right.
Number five, approval of third-party administration contract with ARISTA.
I think some of our, our members of the Finance Committee heard Mr. Hamel present this, and, and so I'll defer to, to those individuals, but Mr. Hamel and his team are spending a lot of money cert, and time serving as the third-party administrator for this work for employees right now. We believe that this would be an advantage to our efficiency as a district if we could have this, this TPA serve our, our employees in a different way. What is it? Mr. Hamel?
Yes, sir.
What is it?
It's a third-party administrator for a 43B and 457 plans. So, currently, if anybody needs something signed, they call me, stop what I'm doing, I sit down, I have to do some reviews of the documents, I have to sign it, fax it or get it back to them. Like I said, today I have the National Life Group person show up with nine documents that she can design. So, I spent 30-plus minutes, almost 40 minutes, sitting down with her, you know, when you sign. If the TPA is hired through ARISTA, what they would do.
What's a TPA, I'm sorry?
TPA, third-party administrator. If we hire ARISTA, then we have a TPA, what they would do is they would set up a website for employees to go to. And once at the website, they would have a relationship with all the current vendors and existing old vendors we have, and they would be able to make those decisions faster and more efficiently than I ever could, be able to reach out to all these vendors to get the necessary information. For example, one of the requirements is somebody comes to me for a loan, the most they can have on a loan at any one time of their funds is $50,000. Now, I've got an Excel spreadsheet that I've been using since I got here seven years ago. I can't call up 20 some of the vendors and say, hey, do they have a loan with you? All I can really do now is look at that Excel spreadsheet to see if I can loan out to this person any time in the past. And if I have, then I have to add up those dollar amounts. Then, if it's more than $50,000, I gotta go back to them and say, have any of these old loans been paid off? And then they're gonna give proof to me. Also, it's, it makes the process longer for some people if there's certain information they need. A person comes to me with a hardship and say, hey, I want to buy a new house. I can't process anything until they sign a contract or they sign a tenant's file. So, that kind of forces them to go do something they may not want to do, you know, and they can't get money from me until I see that contract. So, it's gonna help in the long run. One of the other things is there's a, my, open this, there's a, we got a 14-month window, amnesty period?
Less than that, after March of next year, IRS has this amnesty period for anybody for, that has, I think it's a 403B, right? 403B plan, you can get it up to date and it's, you know, you won't be penalized for anything you failed to keep up to date to that point. They'll do that for us for free, and actually this whole service is free, that's the main question probably. This service charges all the vendors.
Oh, okay.
That's how you score it. Freeze up Larry and that costs you that.
Right.
Yeah, yes, Dr. Greg.
How much does it cost employees who have a 403B? How much does it, what is the cost to an employee who has a 403B or?
Nothing, all they're gonna do.
There's no administration cost to the employee?
No, all they're gonna do, right, the cost would be there, born between ARISTA and what they'll charge the vendor to run the program.
Just speaking up as part of the Finance Committee, I was astounded that Larry was doing this. He seems like he's having to run a business on the side, essentially on top of all of his other job requirements, so I'm very much in favor of, of doing this and putting that in place.
And is there, for the sake of context, this is before the board, because, for what reason?
It's a contract. Dr. Banks has got to sign the contract.
Consent.
All right. Moving on to, I'm six, this is a group part Central softball field improvements.
Consent. Consent. Without discussion.
I had a question about it.
Yes.
I obviously want to approve the work for this, but this was talking about doing, not using a contractor and, and so saving money by not using a contractor. And I mostly just wanted to make sure that, it seems awesome because it's gonna get done and it's gonna cost a lot less money, so I just wanted to make sure that it was going to be the same, it didn't want to be cheap in that way, was my, was my concern, was to make sure that the quality was gonna be adequate.
This is a lot simpler.
Mr. Gilbert, the, the backstory was that we did put out an RFP, we had responses and it's the time of year where contractors escalate their prices. We believe that we can do the same quality of work at a lesser price.
Yeah, we can, like I said, we can, we can meet their program needs with concession stand and the press box as well and field improvement.
I got a question. So, yes, in support of you, what, what are the implications though for other areas of improvement that are needed for, like the track and field? I see that this is coming from, from SLOSS and so.
All of that work, Dr. Gannon, will have to come. Eventually, that, that larger vision that Mr. Fisher, Mr. Gilbert and their team will have to put in place at both Cedar Shoals and Clark Central will come out of this SLOSS fund.
Okay, and if I'm reading this correctly, once these, once this is approved, what will be left? I think this is correct, the funds that are available after, that remaining balance would be for other.
For other projects.
Proposals, however those are rated.
And we've met with our, both high school principals and athletic directors and they have prioritized the work that they want us to, they're, they have a list of items that they want us to address.
Something, we keep it on the consent agenda?
Just a quick question, Dr. Means, is this amount, $1,250,000, is that? I mean, we can overcome, we can do more than that if the need is there, right? I mean, if the dollars are there, I mean, that's just what we have budgeted within SLOSS for that, for field improvements, right?
John has worked closely with that softball program and understands their needs.
Right, no.
And, and that, they have clearly articulated, that's what they do.
But I'm talking about in terms of funds available at the time of board request. We can add more funds.
You could always add more.
Okay.
Two swaps. Yeah. Well, I think it puts in perspective your conversation earlier about. Well, I think it puts in perspective your conversation earlier about computers. Right? I mean, so I mean, puts it in full perspective. And so it within that larger, and we didn't talk about it during the report, of the SLOSS report, but we continue to trend well on a monthly basis with SLOSS. And so we have a healthy SLOSS budget that continues to support our SLOSS needs. For every dollar to invest somewhere, you're not able to invest it where our high school principals and athletic directors have said we're woefully behind in upkeeping facilities.
But to be clear, with this moving forward, it does not mean that schools, so schools have a list of priorities. It's not like putting aside any other, this is not happening at the expense of other projects.
Sure it is. Sure, I mean, so for every, because we always have, our ultimate goal should always be instruction. And so if we, we know we have five schools that have trailers that shouldn't have trailers. And ideally, we should have additions placed on those schools. So we, I think we have something near ten to twelve different trailers at Gaines Elementary School. Ideally, we should have, we should have an additional wing at Gaines. The fact that we have trailers and a mobile situation at Chase, it would be nice for every dime that we're spending in athletics, we're unable to use in our instructional needs. That's the, that's the give and take that that we have here, which again, I think it puts in perspective your conversation earlier about technology.
And for the sake of, and this is, this is, this becomes that push and pull of priorities and the push and pull of recommendations from superintendent and staff about this is why we should prioritize this above this and spend a couple million bucks here and a couple million bucks there. And we, you know, push back and do exactly what we're doing, which is, you know, ask those kind of questions.
And the list, the list that the schools have, like their priority list, where is that like the COC, is that information available?
I think it's as simple as I think the athletic directors sent a list of priorities to Mr. Gilbert.
Okay.
So there's nothing-
I wasn't sure if it was public since it's a money SLOSS fund.
But if you would like to say, we can provide it to you.
And eventually, that would take form in some recommendation that would end up on one of the-
It'll come to you eventually.
Greg, any other consent agenda items? Okay, that's it. Moving on to Section J, Counseling Program Update.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. President, Vice President, Board, Dr. Means, thank you so much for this opportunity. I've been looking forward to this for a while, and you've been asking for this for a while. I wish Mr. Payne were here because he was such a supporter of school counselors, so this is, this report is for Mr. Payne. So this is gonna be a short presentation that follows a written report that you received two weeks ago that has lots of links in it and also some visits that a couple board members attended to a middle and elementary school to see school counselors at work. And thank you for understanding, we had a visit scheduled to a high school this past Monday, and we had actually two crises at that high school. We had a shooting in the community that impacted students and also a student with a medical emergency. So our counselors were super busy Monday morning as they walked into work, and we just felt like you would agree that we prioritize the student needs over your visit, but we'll reschedule it as soon as possible. So I also wanted to introduce to you, and I'm so pleased, because with your support, with board support, we developed a job description last year for a director of school counseling and social emotional learning. We have not had a director in this position in the CCSD for close to twenty years. We've had leads at the elementary, middle and high. But I introduced you tonight, this Tessa Barbizon, and I want to tell you just a few things about her. And I think you'll see why we're so delighted that she's joined our team and is leading up this work. Tessa grew up in the Athens area, so she's a native, she considers herself a native. Her dad is Odell Hollis, does that name ring a bell to you, Mr. Worthy? It might.
Yes.
I thought it might. He retired from plant services with the Clark County School District as a mechanic and was a student himself in the Clark County School District at Child's Elementary, Chase and Athens High. So Tessa's roots in Clark County School District run deep. Tessa is also a first-generation college student. And when she told us about that in her interview and how her experience as a child mechanic and growing up with a focus on education helped her realize the impact of education on the outcome of a student's life, we knew we had the right person to lead our school counseling and SEL initiatives. Most recently, she's been the coordinator of school counseling for the Fulton County School District, where she served over a hundred schools. She worked with Mr. Gaskins, and we hope we still have some friends left in Fulton County because we've brought both of them to work for us. Tessa has been a high school counselor, an elementary school counselor and a high school and middle school teacher. And having someone direct school counseling who's been in the classroom is a really special skill set, and we're really excited about that. So really, Tessa's gonna walk you through our presentation in a minute. We have thirty-three professional school counselors in the district that work to meet our student needs. We believe that our school counselors are some of the most diverse group of employees we have in the district. And I mean diverse by age, experience, race, sexual orientation, religion. Our school counselors really can meet the needs of our kids, our diverse student body, because they are diverse themselves and they are highly skilled professionals. So what I want to do is we want to introduce you to our school counselors, and we suspected the meeting might go into the evening, and they've worked hard all day, so we didn't invite all thirty-three of them to come. But today, they were together at their counselors collaborative, they meet once a month in a professional development capacity together to receive training and coordinate their work. And so they came together today, and thanks to Mary Wickwire, they put together this little video to introduce themselves to you and their work. So I hope you'll get to meet them in person as you move out our schools, which is a great group of professionals. So, yeah.
Great. And thank you, Dawn, for that introduction, I'm so excited to be here. It's been amazing coming back home. And it's really been fantastic after working in Fulton County for a number of years with over two hundred school counselors. Just the level of professionalism and where the counselors are out at here has been fantastic to see the services they're providing to our students. So we just wanted to give you a pretty quick overview of what school counseling looks like from a national standards level and what we're doing here in CCSD with school counseling. So just like a classroom teacher, school counselors have standards that they are trying to work with to achieve with students. And a lot of these are very much so in alignment with the CASL model for social and emotional learning, where we're really trying to develop the student holistically. We are looking at areas of not only social emotional growth, but also academic development as well in their college and career readiness. This just gives you a little bit more information about how should counselors use their time. Eighty percent of a school counselor's time should be in direct services with students. And that looks like two different things. It could either be planned lessons and curriculum, or like Dawn was alluding to about what happened on Monday, sometimes that's responsive services, stopping that planned programming and immediately responding to student need. Our counselors do a fantastic job of ensuring that they're extremely responsive to the needs that we have. And that means supporting classroom teachers, supporting administrators and just, and supporting students that directly refer themselves for counseling services. A national model recommends one to two hundred and fifty students for every one counselor. That's the national model recommendation. And this infographic also gives you a little bit more information about what exactly it's required to become a school counselor. You have to have a master's degree, for example, in the field. So there's higher levels of education to obtain a certificate. And it also talks about the fact that school counseling is a very proactive piece of work. It's not sitting in an office waiting for a student to self-refer. It's providing data-driven programming to ensure that all students are served. One of my biggest goals is that even if a student never requests to see their counselor, they should be able to identify and have named several different experience points that they've had with their counselor, where they've been provided academic guidance, social emotional support and more. This is just a snapshot of some of the things that we've done this year. We've also included what our school counselor to student ratio is. We currently cross the district, this encompasses all of our schools, including Career Academy and Classic City High School, which each have a full-time counselor. We're at one to four eighteen. Also, my position is new, as Dawn mentioned, and thank you for being supportive of that. We've really been able to make in just less than a year, nine months, I think we've made some really good strides. One of the biggest things we've focused on is that school counselors are, along with school principals that are developing those school growth plans, they're developing program goals and they're aligning those goals with the SEL goal for their school growth plan, so that their work is directly aligned in supporting the interventions they're doing, the programming. All of that's aligned with the initiatives of the schools that are playing a critical role in achieving those school SEL goals. We've done plenty of other things that was listed here, and we're happy to talk more about any of those things. Some of those are new legislation, like Senate Bill 401, which is a law that Georgia passed for child sexual abuse awareness and prevention education. So there's a lot of things that we do to help with some things that are compliance-based measures, like parents law, but are critical pieces. And then there's other things like signs of suicide as an example, a program that we've adopted for suicide prevention and education with our students.
And that was adopted and fully implemented in our secondary schools following the loss of a student. Last year, you might remember, we lost a student to suicide, and so we made immediate changes and implemented that programming.
And we're also able to receive that, the funding for that program fully through a grant across our districts, through our funds. And the counselors really embraced it and fully implemented it in all our middle and high schools with one grade level. And we have a roll-up plan to eventually have all the students exposed to that curriculum. This is just some additional information of what we've started to do with having a central lead in my position. We've really started looking at crisis data tracking. We are looking at post-secondary matriculation data, who is actually leaving our schools and going and enrolling and matriculating to college settings or post-secondary settings. How do we close that gap of graduates to post-secondary enrollments? And work where we're really diving in and trying to determine what kind of supports do we need to provide students from a proactive school counseling lens. We'll transition and talk a little bit about social emotional learning, unless anyone has any questions about the school counseling. So social emotional learning, of course, is one of the six strategic priorities, and that is another facet of my position, not just working with school counselors, but also working on ensuring that we're meeting that strategic priority as a district. And one of the things, one of the next things we're gonna show you, prior to my arrival, an SEL task force worked together and determined that CCSD would align with the CASL national model for social emotional learning. If you haven't seen much of this model, I hope this handout will be extremely helpful. We wanted to give you something that not only had this wheel of competencies, but also contained the specific standards for social emotional learning that we're looking to see our students grow in. And so when you look at this wheel, essentially it contains a couple of different components. The orange, green and yellow categories, those are areas, those are the general overarching standards that we're trying to achieve. And you can see the specific qualities within each standard that we're working on with our students. The exterior of the wheel really highlights where this learning is taking place, classrooms, our schools as a whole. That's a big part of the school culture and climate piece, the students obtaining these competencies from a bigger level as well as within the classroom, and of course, their homes and communities do play a really important role in that.
If you move around schools, you're gonna hear people talking in terms of these competencies. When we talk about students, it's no longer that they're good or bad. They might be lacking in responsible decision-making, you know, and so we're talking, we're using the language. Adults are using this language, children and children are using it as well. This helps us develop a framework. So, you know, kind of where we've come from, I like to tell people, even though every conference you go to now, you're gonna hear about social emotional learning and it's the buzzword and all the articles are written about it, this is not new, okay? Social emotional learning has existed in good parenting, in good teaching and being a good community member for eons, for hundreds of years. It's best practice. We used to call it, decades ago, we called it character education. And in Clark County, we used a connected school model. That's the language we were talking about fifteen, twenty years ago. But these concepts are not new. No one just realized that children should have good social emotional health. It's been repackaged and reconceptualized, and we have a new framework. So last year, prior to Tessa's arrival, and I'll make this all available to you so you can go to all of these links yourself, because I think it's a PDF in your packet, we did convene an SEL task force committee, and that's when we settled on the CASL model. We did a visit last year's spring break in March to the Atlanta Public Schools. They are one of the CASL kind of showcase districts. They were early adopters of the CASL model, and they have a lot going on in APS. They have SEL coaches in their schools, they have a whole infrastructure of SEL support. They do an awful lot with their employees, with onboarding. And I'll tell you, one of the takeaways that they said to us, and this is resonant, and I've said it to Dr. Means over and over, and it's guided some of our decisions, we asked them, "What are your lessons learned? You're four years into this SEL business and working with CASL, what would you do differently?" And what they said is this, they realized that they started with a focus on students. They thought that students had deficits, and if they just met those students' needs and built their competencies, everything would be better. And they said, "What we should have started and what we overlooked, what we've now come back to is adult SEL is as important or more than the student SEL." And students need positive role models of healthy, competent, socially, emotionally aware adults to learn from. And so they're doing a lot in their teams on team building with adults, on how adults speak to each other. The kids said, "We watch you and we listen to you." And so if our teachers like each other, appreciate each other, thank each other, practice good skills, we will too. And so that was a big takeaway, and we're really infusing that through our district. Lynn, can you click on the SEL growth tree? This was some really good work that the task force did last year in our SMART goal, yes, that one, in our SMART goal work. What we did is we took the competencies and we did a crosswalk. We said, "Well, how do we know where our students are performing on these SEL competencies, the CASL competencies?" And what this team did is we crosswalked and we mapped data points that already existed. We have a universal behavior screener that we use for elementary school students, and that helped us map some data. We used attendance and discipline data, which speaks to school connection and the competencies. And then we turned to the Georgia Student Health Survey, which is administered annually and does have some questions that ask students to self-report on their empathy for other students, their respect for diversity. And we have all that data, we have it going back ten years. And so we pulled it and we have, we provided it to each of the schools back last summer as they were developing their school growth plans. And we said, "These might be some areas, as you're developing an SEL goal, that you might want to pay attention to." So we're tracking it at the district level and then at the school level. You'll see things like incivility, that's language from our code of conduct and it's state-reported, and so we're tracking incidents of student incivility. None of these are perfect measures and they don't similarly define a student's social emotional competency, but they do give us some indication of if we're moving the needle. And we're really excited to get back our Georgia Student Health Survey data from the state in a couple of months and to see if we've moved the needle. state in a couple of months and to see if we've moved the needle, because we've put in place so many interventions this year. Thanks, Lynn. We created a, a district resource list. There's many different curriculum and ideas and programs, many of which we were already using in our district. I mentioned School Connect, Second Step Curriculum, we were already using. We had a grant, we purchased Second Step and we're using that. That's one of the Castle-aligned curricula. Playworks is how some of our schools have chosen to use their title funding and other funding to increase the social emotional competency of children during recess and cooperative games and teaching play. That's all SEL. So again, we've been doing the work, we're aligning the work and measuring the work now in a different way. So that's just some of where we've been. This is what we've done this year.
And so this year, our work has really been around using the goal tree to support the schools and ensuring they had an appropriate SEL goal that they could measure and they could really create specific interventions to work with students and see those, see those outcomes and see where they ended up. So counselors have been receiving specialized training in that work, and we've all been trying to provide different supports across the board to ensure that we can help schools meet their SEL goal needs. We've also provided some specific training around SEL aligned work. We've done a lot of work with restorative practices and specialized trainings for all of our support services staff, along with some other staff members. And then one of the big things moving forward is going to be for the SEL task force to be redeveloped and convened to determine a more specific focus for a school-wide Castle model implementation. How will a school become fully aligned with that Castle model? And so that kind of takes us to, what does that look like? I hope this helps item one, picture of what exactly does it look like to say, this school is aligned with a Castle model for social emotional learning. Social emotional learning is infused in this school. What does that exactly look like? You can see some of these indicators. Explicit SEL instruction. Well, that means having time in the day where the teacher is actually teaching around one of those core competencies. Integrated with academic instruction. So when the teacher is teaching ELA, math, etc., they're bringing in elements of those core competencies and reminding students and, and bringing that out in their teaching. Youth voice and engagement, and I'll just highlight a couple of other ones, focus on adult SEL. Supportive discipline, that's an important part of it. Our disciplinary practice is aligned to say that this so, social emotional model is really being implemented in the school. If some of these key elements are missing, we're not going to see the impact that SEL will have. And what is the ultimate impact of SEL? Increased academic performance, increased attendance or engagement, and a reduction of discipline. Those are the outcomes that we want to see. Ultimately, what we want to see, which is harder to really nail down, is that these students that are graduating from CCSD are really truly ready to be a part of our world and to be able to be able to be productive and happy and just successful members of society. So ultimately, we do want to see those three big things, but without all of these indicators present, we're going to be missing the mark. So that's our next big piece of work, is really making sure that we are working with schools to implement these indicators of SEL. This is just an illustration of, you know, as Dawn was talking about adult SEL and APS saying, well, we missed the mark because we didn't really focus on adults. I think it's important for everyone to know, well, what does that look like when we start focusing on adults? Castle says it really includes these three components, learning, collaborating, and modeling. And you can see more details around what exactly that looks like. A lot of it entails having these PLC groups within a school, having mentoring partnerships, and that really the leaders of the building are also following Castle best practices and they're modeling these social emotional learning competencies for the, for the staff and for the students. What does SEL look like for the students? This is in particular in the classroom, and we just wanted to break this down a little bit more as well. There's just a couple of things that are really critical to ensure that SEL is really infused into the classroom. It's not just starting every morning with fifteen minutes teaching a program and then going about your day and never discussing those things again. Imagine if we're talking about self-management and I talk about it for fifteen minutes, and then when incidents occur throughout the day, I never go back to that. I never make those connections for you as a student. And when we're doing, if we're in ELA and we're talking through a text, I'm not bringing in any of those competencies, and I'm really not infusing this as something where the student is not just learning it, but living it, absorbing it, thinking about it, processing it, and continuing to go back to it to truly, truly understand what these things mean. So within the classroom, we do want to have explicit SEL instruction. You can see that's one of the legs. I love this illustration because it's a three-legged stool, and I always, I told the counselors when we were doing a training, if, you know, if you just have explicit SEL instruction, like Second Step programming, would anyone want to sit on a one-legged stool? You would fall over. It's not going to be sustainable. It's not going to last. And that's why it is really important to ensure that we've got all the elements present so that we're really seeing the students gain some traction and experience success in the current outcome areas. So what's next?
What's next is depending on the budget proposal that, that we bring to you in the UTEP, we hope that we're able to nudge those counselor to student ratios. And we have some ideas about some critical areas of need. We've been talking constantly with our principals, our building leaders, our, our support staff, our counselors, to see where can we have the most impact on students if we were to lower that ratio. We're funded by the state for one to four hundred and fifty, so we're below what the state funds us for, but we're not close enough to the one to two fifty. We also are talking about additional support services for the full SEL implementation, which does include our full array of school social worker psychologists, behavior specialists, more mental health practitioners actually in our schools. Instead of just depending on our community partners to push in with mental health, we believe that we have enough of a need that we could hire mental health specialists. So looking at some of those issues, and this might, this probably won't be, we get everything that we want and we say we need next year. We understand that. This is the direction we want to go, and we'll continue to look for ways to, to increase our support staff. And then like Tessa mentioned, really reconvening the SEL task force to complete implementation of a framework, searching to align curriculum, and making sure we have good assessment measures so we can report back to you and tell you how we're doing on our SEL Castle competencies. That is where we're going, and we will be happy to answer any questions about social emotional learning or school counseling.
Can you talk about, does Castle work? I mean, is, is there any good evidence on that this works?
There's a strong evidence base, and what they've done is they've aligned, I mean, it's not Castle that works, right? That's the model, that's the competency. The, the cap, there are, in the What Works Clearinghouse database of evidence-based practices, that's what we're looking at. So when we say Second Step is aligned with the Castle framework, it's aligned and it has evidence, research-based, too, that the Second Step curriculum doesn't work when implemented correctly. So it's not that Castle we like as a model, it makes sense to us and our students, but it's the, the other parts that work.
And the Castle model itself does have a lot of research showing its effectiveness in terms of a model, but is the real crux is fully implementing the model to fidelity, like those indicators, for example. Well, I mean, again, I think the student discipline piece is key. If, if we're in a situation where we've got a lot of these elements present, but at the end of the day, there's ingrained discipline practices going on in a whole day, I mean, then you won't see the effectiveness of the model. The model itself has a lot of research behind it, but again, yielding results for us as a district is going to be really dependent on, on our implementation and ensuring that we break down and address the key factors and indicators.
That's where we've asked Tessa to dig in. It's not enough to say we focus on literacy, university, and social emotional learning. We're, we're talking now about the, the what and how of that.
Now, in terms of Second Step, I went to a workshop at, at the National School Board Association, and they were saying that Second Step, first off, is a very effective program according to the people in that room, and, but that it was, it was more for primary than secondary.
It is, it's an elementary program. They have a middle school program. It, you know, we have not adopted the middle school program. They have revamped it just recently, and I've sat on a couple of webinars regarding it. I don't have much information. I would certainly like to explore more. I think there's a couple of other middle school programs that are pretty good. And right now, schools do have the ability to, to purchase and implement a program if they choose to do so. We do have some elementary schools that are implementing Second Step.
So, so that's, so Second Step is being adopted school by school? Is, is it?
Correct.
Based on their title, one funding, is that?
It has, we got a grant that, that funded, I think, six.
It, it funded some programs, but the, the challenges with the curriculum, with the initial grant, it funded for one curriculum kit per grade level, and that makes it a challenge. And if you've ever had hard copy items, it has puppets in the kit, lots of different deliverables, things go missing, things get all over the place. So we've had to really work, we did work with our Title I department at the district level, and we asked the counselors to inventory their kits and to tell us if there were needed items that needed replacing. But we really have to also partner with the building leaders, because the Second Step program is intended to be implemented by classroom teachers. So that's one of the things that we have to have, we have to ensure that we're, we're standing shoulder-to-shoulder planning with the principals when we're deciding if we want to implement a program, a specific program.
Just add one more question along the same line and then other people. But in terms of, of the Second Step, when you were saying that, that we got a grant, Dawn, for some schools, are we, are we kind of in a situation, thanks to where the money is coming from, that we have? You know how we, well, with Language Arts, where we have different curriculums at different schools? And are we in that same kind of place with SEL where some elementary schools are, are using this?
That's a great question. That's why we adopted the Castle model. What we want to say to schools is, you have some defined autonomy. You have, we want you to follow this model of these five core competencies. There's many ways you can get there. Some of our counselors and support staff are making up, you know, not making up, they're developing advisement lessons from their, they have professional knowledge and skills or tools or, you know, games and strategies that they've used forever that teach the SEL competencies. So I'm, I'm a little less concerned with everyone doing the same thing as I am everyone adhering to the Castle model and making sure we hit the mark of those competencies. And so that's why we developed the menu, because there are already a lot of resources in our district, and we didn't want to say, throw out all those resources, we're all going to do this. It's about the, the competencies, would you say?
Well, and there's also different needs in different buildings, and different curriculums address different things. So that's one of the big important pieces for the task force to reconvene and really work with school leaders to ascertain what their needs are and what they're trying to achieve in terms of, on their school growth plans with our SEL goal. What would support that? The Castle model does say, you should have explicit SEL instruction, and I think that is important, that we need to prioritize time in the day to make sure we are providing explicit SEL instruction to students. But we need to, we need to continue to work on what that's going to look like, and it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all model, because our schools do have, do have some different needs, but we would want to make sure that there's an equitable access to programs that are aligned with the Castle model, that we would not want to say just, you know, you can opt to do this or opt to do that. Correct. So we're looking at that too, because we also have to look at for middle and high schools, the logistics of delivery and a lot of other factors that, you know, what is going to be sustainable and impactful.
Yeah, I was wondering, what's been your sense of what counselors say they need? Because I know like with this framework, part from what I can tell, it's about what they're delivering to students as well as staff. And I know that they meet once in a while in the collaborative, but they're also, as you've mentioned, involved in some pretty tough situations. So what's been your sense, in addition to incorporating this framework, what's been your, your sense of what counselors across our district need to do, to do their work more effectively?
More of them. I mean, more, more of them. I, you know, we had a middle school site visit, and I was, you know, thankful that, you know, we had, we had some board members come out, and actually, it's a very rare opportunity for someone to be able to witness a small group counseling session. But we were able to, you know, we talked to the students, and they consented to have some visitors come in and see one of the male empowerment sessions that happens at Clark Middle School. And it, it's had a huge impact on these students' experiences and even outcomes with severe reductions in discipline rates. And in addition to that, they're preparing to enter Clark Central High School for signing up for AP coursework, advanced coursework, et cetera, that they were not engaging in when they were at the sixth grade level. Like it really has had some, some impact on these students' lives, but there's currently one counselor there. So, I mean, that's a challenge. That's a challenge. But even with more, it is really critical that the professional development needs are met. That is another strategic priority of the district, and all of that has to be aligned. That's one of the things we've tried to do in the report that we prepared, is to really show you how this stuff is, all of this, these requests and our analysis of the current state is aligned with strategic priorities and how our recommendations are aligned with that work.
So my, my question was about, again, I think I heard you say that you're, you're not waiting for them to self-identify or self-report, or how do you actually engage with those groups? Where, where does that come from?
I'm glad you asked that, because that's an important point of clarity. So it looks, it looks different at the elementary level than it does at the middle and high school level. At the elementary level, the primary delivery model is focused on what counselors call core curriculum, classroom counseling lessons, pushing into the classrooms, working with the students in a classroom setting. Small groups and individual counseling are going to be focused on the higher tiers of needs that students might have. At the high school level, I will tell you, once we get into that secondary level, it is beyond critical that students have annual individualized one-on-one meetings with their counselor, evaluating their schedule and their plan for graduation. And when I say schedule, I don't mean just semantics, like, well, you know, I need to make sure I get banned in there, but talking about their post-secondary plans and opportunities, career interests. We have, we have a college career readiness software that the district utilizes called Zello. We used to use an antiquated version called Career Cruising, and we actually migrated over to Zello, and we've been working really hard to implement that so that students have access to that planning tool and that counselors can use that to help spearhead conversations with students. So for example, if you're familiar with the Holland codes, students completing assessments on the front end so that counselors can have better informed conversations with students about their, basically their, who are you as a person? What are you interested in? What are you interested in doing beyond high school? Really having those informed discussions and making sure that their secondary experience aligns with those post-secondary plan as well.
One of the amend that Mr. Davis and Dr. Barry net told us that you needed two years of a foreign language in high school to go to a four-year college. And we said, how did you know that? And so my school counselor called me.
But we were here, that an eighth grade student understood that. I mean, that's, that is very important. We do, we want to empower the students to be advocates, but we also want to make sure that, you know, if the student is never going to go and request to see their counselor on something, there are some students that you will see daily as a school counselor, maybe just every other day, but then there's some students that will never come across your doors. It's beyond critical that we have this proactive counseling model where we are intentionally meeting with students and providing them critical college readiness support.
And if I recall correctly, some of the Ivy League schools require three years of foreign language.
Actually, most competitive universities do require three years, including the University of Georgia for, for three years.
I'm still trying to be the math. So you've got seven hundred, how many kids at Clark Middle?
Over seven hundred. I'm not sure their current enrollment right now.
And how many counselors?
They have a one and a half counselor allotment, and the half is hired, they've hired a school social worker, a trained school social worker, but functions in the building is in the building. That how each middle school has one and a half counselor allotment right now.
So somebody else must be helping counsel, right?
That part-time social worker, yes. And they're a district, they also have a district allotted social worker, along with the rest of the school psychologist.
There's so many people now, I'm just, I'm confused as to who's on first.
Yes, yes.
In some of our places, yes, but I'll have to spin some pounds and guide that. But the fact that you have the group meetings, I think is really important, because at that age, they really do like to be among themselves, right at the age of, sort of, that's a, Dr. Barry, thank you.
Yeah, this, this eighty percent of time spent in direct comprehensive services to students, do we have an idea of where our school counselors are now?
That's a great question. We don't track time usage here. That's something that I have done in previous districts. It's, it's challenging for them to track time usage, but that's one of the things that I have pushed them to for next year. That's one of our goals, is to really start looking at where are we at capturing more time usage data. We are, we do capture certain data around We are, we do capture certain data around crisis response, but even that data that we're capturing is just incident count versus one incident could take six hours. So it's not necessarily, you know, when I was looking at the data, you know, unfortunately, it's not reflective of time. Although our middle schools, you know, we've just started tracking this data with a KPI system as part of my KPI metrics. But I'm really working with counselors to look at that same process and make sure that we're working with school admin teams to look at outcomes with school counseling. Like, what is your school counseling doing in terms of student outcomes? That's really important.
That's great, yes. Mr. Davis, go ahead. We're heading towards the home stretch.
You know, in terms of elementary and middle school, what, what are the, how much, how much administrative duties are counselors saddled with?
It depends on the school. Our school counselors do all manage section five report plans for the students. That, depending on the amount of five oh fours you may have in terms of the caseload, and that, that can be, that can be an additional management responsibility. They would be attending those meetings as a support professional regardless, but coordinating the paperwork and more certainly adds administrative duties. But it's a range. I mean, some of the work that I've talked about, too, is, you know, having the right mindset around certain things that one might perceive as duties, like bus duty. You know, our two counselors at Whitehead Road, for example, they're out there greeting students, but what a fantastic way to, for your, to be visible with your students and for you to be one of the first faces that the student sees when they get off the bus. That was one of the things the Whitehead counselor actually wrote about in the video. So it's, it's really about unpacking when counselors have brought any concerns to me. I try to really look at, can we unpack this and see how much time is it really taking? You know, do you have some data around how much time you're spending? And also, what are the services that aren't getting provided as a result of this situation? So really trying to push them into some data analysis so we can advocate from the right lens of, if this is not there, then I can do this. I will share just a very quick example in that my, a middle school counselor said, I was asked to help administration to do uniform checks. I said, I really don't want to do something that I feel like is a bit punitive with the student. What the counselor did instead, which actually takes way more time, is every student that got just noted as part of the uniform check, he sat down with every single student to go through why they weren't in uniform. Did they have a need because, did they not have uniforms? Was it an issue of lack of access to laundry facilities? Like, what was the situation? He followed up with appearance, and it turned something that could have been very punitive into something that was like checking on the student's needs and returned to class in a very restorative way. So that's, you know, what we talked about. That was actually more time than if he had done that administrative duty. So sometimes it's really not the time as much as the right work and making sure we're serving our kids.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Great presentation and welcome to the studio. Okay, moving on in our agenda, so we have, we added an item under J. This is G S B A legislative positions to be adopted. And just along the exact same page, this is, we forwarded around, these are Clark County School District's proposed changes to the Georgia School Board Association's legislative agenda. And whatever we decide will, if Greg and the Government Relations Committee has made some recommendations, if we decide to adopt these recommendations, then we will send someone on our behalf to advocate for these recommendations on April 29th. And then GSBA will decide what their overall legislative agenda looks like. And we will come back in May and decide whether we support GSBA's overall legislative agenda. And then we will send Dr. Gant, June 7th, to summer meeting to vote our will as CCSD at the summer meeting. That's kind of where we're at. And Greg has circulated these, and hopefully we've got a chance to read through and ponder what has been recommended by the, our own Government Relations Committee. But if there's any questions for our chair of the Government Relations Committee, now would be the time to have them, because we'll be asked next week to vote on these. Any questions?
If I can just have, have just a minute. One thing that I do want to share with the group is that, you know, part, I mean, this is, what we're doing here is related to what folks are encouraged to do on the 23rd in terms of going to the District 11 meeting. So if you haven't had the opportunity to sign up, it's very easy. I think, you know, John and Linda and everything had put out instructions that were pretty distinct about how to do it. Because what, what, what we're interested in doing is, of course, getting the whole GSBA, district by district, and working on our own district to push forward the agenda that is being adopted by GSBA that does obligate us, once, you know, once it's voted on. And so, so I just, I just kind of want to put this in a total frame and...
I mean, we're trying to, it sounds like we're trying to come at as many angles as possible to overall influence GSBA, which is the advocacy group for school boards across the state of Georgia.
Because not too many schools have a government relations committee, for those who wouldn't know. We are, we are setting now, if you were in the Atlanta School District, they have, they have their own lobbyists. But, you know, for us to have our own committee and having done so for many years is a real hallmark and we would like to kind of hold model. But with that said, are there any questions about, I mean, I can very briefly explain each of these, if that would be beneficial, or, I mean, because we are going to have to sell them. You know?
Well, that's, that's the second. Well, that's the second. So next week, well, these will be on our agenda to approve. It sounds like there's not a lot of questions, so I just get that going well. The next question will be, who do we send on April 29th to advocate for these to be adopted as part of the overall GSBA legislative agenda? And as one, I would recommend that we send Mr. Davis, if you'd be willing to go.
Well, I'm, I'm already, they haven't turned me, I mean, I'm already on the committee.
Which committee is this?
This is the April 29th committee. I was invited to be a part of that committee. The COs, God, what is it?
Yeah, something like that.
Twenty acronyms. I don't know.
So are you there representing the district, or are you there representing?
You know, that's a very good question.
Because we want someone representing the district in that space.
What capacity were you invited, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was invited by the, by the president of GSBA. And, and so...
But you could do both, or you could do them at once.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming it's a district level, because they don't, because the, because Tom Odom, yeah, Tom Odom, I'm sure it's district, because...
District 11.
Yeah, because Tom has been wearing a lot, Tom Odom, the president of the Okoni School Board, has been wearing a lot of hats since Vern stepped away.
So you're there representing district, but I'm meaning the Clark County School District doesn't have a representative there?
Well, that, Clark County School District is a part of it.
I know we're a part of it.
Well, generally, the only reason...
No, the only, the only way we would go to this as an individual district is if we are proposing a change to GSBA legislative agenda, which we are.
Yeah, which we have done the last few years. But that's what gets us there, are these proposals.
And Mr. President, Dr. May, I was trying to think of the House bill to increase the whole scholarship. House Bill 787. 787, let's keep track of that. To increase the whole scholarship.
Okay. So it sounds like we're ready to go on this particular agenda item next week? Sounds good. Okay. The next item we have is an executive session, and I recommend the executive session for employment compensation, hiring dismissal, or evaluation of employees.
Both of you go in the executive session.
Thank you. The worthy second by Dr. Knox, all in favor? Okay. Let's do it.